Morning, everyone. And if you'll please take your seats. The August 6, 2014 meeting of City Council is called to order. The meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for hearing impaired viewers, made possible this month through an underwriting from .Vegas. Please note customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communications who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast, KCLV, Channel 2, and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chamber out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshal will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available online, the clerk's office at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please come forward again too and see our city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and see the personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise this morning for invocation given by Reverend Robert Fowler, Victory Missionary Baptist Church, and please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. Would you please bow with me? Eternal God and Heavenly Father, we thank you this morning for the precious privilege that we have of being able to live this day. We bless your name for getting us up this morning and causing the blood to run warm within our veins, giving us a reasonable portion of our health and strength. We thank you for purpose and we thank you for life. And we're certainly grateful for each and every individual that serves over our city in the City Council, and we pray for them as well today. We ask God that you would bless them, especially today, and specifically bless their families for the privilege of giving them to us and loaning them to us for the time that they serve our city. This morning, we pray for our City Council. We ask God that you would give us a strategy that would lead to success as we deliberate about our business principles, help us to use all the brains that we have, and certainly all that we can borrow. Remind us, Lord, that as we stumble at times in discussing and deliberating, that there's purpose even in the problems that we face, and then give us the stamina that we need to push forward and push through so that we might find the purpose that is highlighted by the problems. Always keep us mindful that our business practices and protocols and principles should always be aware of the fact that there is the least among us. Your word teaches us that you are a friend to the poor, and we pray, God, that you would help us to go in the strength that we have, in the minds that we have, and the understanding and awareness that we possess, always knowing that where we lack, you're able to perform miracles for us that would lead our city to peace and prosperity. And we ask these things in Christ's name, for His sake. Amen.
Morning, everyone. Anthony Rogero, who happens to be Mayor Pro Tem's very able assistant, was out last night at Desert Shores for National Night Out and was handling a law -- I shouldn't say "were handling," you were barbecuing hot dogs. Did a great job with your babushka on, I loved that. For anybody who doesn't know what a babushka is, it's a Polish name for a scarf, which covered his head. You did a great job, and you survived. Very proud. National Night Out last night, 2014, was the 30th year. Really trying to spread the word for all of us in every community to make sure that we do everything we can to prevent crime. And so it was a great night, and I know all the council persons were out in various wards or downtown here in front of the Container Park, out in your ward. We ran into Congressman Horford, was out at the shores, and then was coming to Ward 5. I know that Deana Titus, Congresswoman Titus, was down in Ward 3, and we didn't get to 1, but I lived there, so that's good. Did you have a good time?
Good time.
Good turnout with Clark at Metro. So Metro was really out having a wonderful time with us all. But what a great night, great celebration. So for our first item, oh my, Mayor Pro Tem, right here, August Citizen of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, good morning, everyone. Alan, how you doing? You okay? I just wanted to make sure you're doing all right. Okay, it is absolutely my honor this morning to recognize the August 2014 Citizen of the Month in the City of Las Vegas. This is a very remarkable lady that lives in Ward 4, and please help me welcome the Citizen of the Month, Ramon Fiol. Would you please come up here? And Phil, I know you like being next to your wife at all times, so why don't you come up here too?
Thank you.
Ramon Fiol is on a mission. In Hebrew, it's called "Tekun Alam," or repairing the world. Ray has made it her life mission to preserve the memory of the Holocaust and to make sure Holocaust survivors in our community and around the United States are provided with the services they need. Ray was three years old when the Nazis invaded Paris, and by age 7, her parents had been interned in the Auschwitz concentration camp where they were ultimately murdered. Ray was in the care of a Christian family who saved her life, and she now dedicates herself to making this world a better place and showing students by her example that despite the hardships people have to endure, they can make a good life for themselves and make a difference in the lives of others. Ray arranges social events for Las Vegas survivors and helps ensure that anyone in need gets help from local agencies and are treated with the dignity and respect they deserve. Ray also schedules survivors to speak with teachers and students in both public and private schools at the elementary, middle, and high school level, and she's worked with the Film Department and UNLV on two documentaries. Ray speaks about her childhood experience because she believes that it's important to teach students that prejudice and discrimination can cause serious harm. Despite her experience as a hidden child orphaned by the Holocaust, her message is positive and optimistic, and we are lucky to have her in our Las Vegas community. Ray has been happily married to her husband, Phil, for 58 years. Ray and Phil met in Paris, France, at a social center while Phil was on leave from his United States Army Station assignment. Ray and Phil married in Paris in 1956 and returned to the United States in 1957. When they returned to the States, Ray and Phil had two children, David's daughter -- their son, daughter -- let's try that again. Their son, David, and their daughter, Ellen, and they also have grandchildren. Ray is the president of the Holocaust Survivors Group of Southern Nevada and is a member of the Governor's Advisory Council on Education relating to the Holocaust. And this was the big deal here, she was recently named the Nevada Senior of the Year by the National Silver Hair Congress. Is that great? The Nevada Senior of the Year. And she was also recognized by the Aging Services Director Organization. And I believe in the audience is Russ Seanbeck from the Nevada delegation, Nevada Senior Hair Congress. Would you please stand, be recognized? Thank you. And Tony Festa, the Vice President of the Aging Services Directors Organization. Thank you for coming down. Therefore, on behalf of the Mayor, myself, and the entire City Council, it is my honor and my privilege to recognize Ramon Fiol as the August 2014 City of Las Vegas Citizen of the Month. I'd like to present you with this plaque that says Citizen of the Month. And right over here, we're going to have a sign with your name on it that's going to be posted outside City Hall for the month of August. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Why don't you say a couple of things?
Thank you. Well, I guess I have just a few words I wrote down. A few, no, just a few. And this is, thank you, Mayor Goodman, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilman Anthony, as well as the Las Vegas Council for your thoughtfulness in selecting me as the Las Vegas Citizen for the month of August. I am humbled as well as honored by this award. I'm also grateful for the recognition it brings to the local Las Vegas Holocaust Survivors Community and Holocaust Education throughout Las Vegas, Clark County, and other private schools. This education is so important today, now more than ever. First and foremost, the world needs to be reminded of what happened over 70 years ago when 11 million people were murdered, of which 6 million were Jews, when nations stood silent. The Holocaust story not only relates all the events of that horrifying era, but it also teaches our young people that discrimination, bullying, and disregard for others' pain and suffering have no place in this world. It is my hope that the lessons are passed on from generation to generation to help this make a better world and to never forget. I hope to continue helping our Holocaust survivor community as well as in my involvement in Holocaust education as long as I can. Thank you so much for this award. I will cherish it. Thank you.
You teach us so much, but most of all, talk about stability and marriage. 58 years, that's pretty good. We're at 52. Oscar and me, miracle, another miracle, 52, so we'll be up there. Okay, for our next item, I have the pleasure of recognizing an outstanding team of city employees, my favorite time, which is the Action Team Award, recognizing a team of employees who strive to be superheroes in our workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for, I'm sure we could have a group choir here, achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. I'd like to invite our wonderful Communications Director, David Riggelman, to join us at the podium for this presentation. And I want everybody to know, he's not on crutches, no cane, he's upright, right? He's wonderful. The August 2014 Action Team is made up of David's Public Affairs Group for their work at the 2014 -- oh, ha-ha, State of the City Address. Every year, as you all know, the city hosts a State of the City event where I communicate the city's accomplishments over the previous year and give vision and goals for the future. There are a lot of people who work together from our IT people in back and underneath us, in the basement, and up on whatever floor it is, that really work so hard to make our special events team operations in maintenance, detention, and enforcement, and administrative service staff to make sure that the events come off so smoothly. But each year, it's David's Public Affairs Group which is there behind the scene, acting as the glue and ensuring that the information I give is reaching the public, from gathering topics and background information for the speech to guide the slideshow, working with the media, and responding to whatever issues may crop up. This group is at its best during the State of the City, and truly, I am forever indebted to each one of them. This year, the team decided to leverage social media to create a bunch of twits, to run a Twitter scape that we had, updating live in our chambers during the speech. I'll tell you, I was a bit apprehensive of the idea at first, in fact, I was more than apprehensive. I said, "This is really nuts." But it did work out beautifully, thanks to the decisive planning of the group, created a way for our community to react and respond to the information we were sharing immediately. And it was a huge success. We had more than 1,700 mentions and were trending on Twitter during the State of the City that night, which is just amazing and I believe a first in our state. I'd like to invite the members of this fabulous team to join us at the podium. We have Diana Paul. Wonderful. Wonderful family lady too. Jace Radke, also wonderful family man. And his family is here. Oh, and his daughters. Oh my goodness. Look at those beautiful little girls. Jace, look at those little girls. They are cute. Oh my gosh. Jennifer Davies, who is our social media lady, joined us about a year ago, doing a great job. And as nice as she looks, she has a very firm hand, and she will tell you, "You will be tweeting, you will be doing this. I will assist, but we'll make it world known." So thank you, Jennifer. Susan Martinez, Susie, where are you? Here she comes. Susie's been with us for a great while and just done wonderful things. It's just a lot of little jokes going on back here, I will not tell you what they're saying. And Margaret Kurtz, so creative in her department, everything that she has been doing. Wonderful, wonderful. And Aaron Sebelius, where are you, Aaron? Here she is. Lady in her own right, always smiling, happy, and just full of ideas and innovation, and just what a great team. Councilman, she's trying to say hello to you, stop talking. We have certificates for each of you, and I want to tell you how much we appreciate all that you do, not only for the State of the City, which of course, pardon, which I depend entirely, but throughout the rest of the year. You're a great team, and look at them, aren't they just wonderful? And they are smiling, they're happy, they're good people, loyal, hard workers, knowledgeable, and children don't listen. This is all about your dad. So we're just saying how wonderful your daddy is and everyone, it's just great. David, I know you're so proud, and I'm going to give you the microphone in just one second. This group is on time, always, on target, and exceeds expectations. And so we're proud to have you here at the City of Las Vegas. And public information, it's critical how we impart to the world who and what we're doing in the City of Las Vegas. Las Vegas is known worldwide, and this is the team that keeps the word out there, the true word, I should say. So David, I know, I mean, everything's about leadership, and he's been inspiring. How many years you been doing this?
15.
Oh, see, how long. And before that, media specialist on TV. Turn on Channel 2 anytime you want to hear David interviewing one of our wonderful council persons. I know, I could ask you if they'd be honest, how many times they watched David interview them? I noticed I've turned three times on and gotten Councilman Coffin in a very flowered shirt. How many times have you watched that interview? Truthfully, I don't believe a word he's saying. Here's David Riggelman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Well, as you said, I'm very proud of this group right here, and we want to thank Mr. Steve Martin, who's right here in the back. He nominated them. Thank you, Steve, from Information Technologies. It's always great when someone outside of your work group recognizes the things that you do, so thank you very much, Steve. As Steve mentioned in his nomination, as you read, Mayor, these guys were phenomenal during the State of the City, especially with the response that we had on Twitter that night. It was amazing, and you were great, Mayor. Everybody wanted to talk about what you were talking about, so we were very happy for all that. But I think that you know, and the council knows, and I'd like to share with the audience, but these folks aren't great just during the State of the City, they're great every day that they come to work, as you well know. And I'd like to share with you a list of some of the responsibilities that they have, this small but mighty group. They coordinate the thousands of media inquiries that we get at the city every year, this group does. They're responsible for all of our social media posts, and they've helped you guys get very active on social media as well, and we're on Facebook, and Twitter, and Tumblr, and Instagram, and YouTube. They're responsible for all that. They help IT coordinate the city's web content, huge, huge undertaking every single day. We're responsible for the marketing and branding of the city, and we have Aaron to help us do that these days. We're responsible, on top of everything else, for the city's publications. We help you guys put your e-newsletters out to the public that you do on a regular basis. We coordinate with the graphic artists to put out our graphic art functions, everything from your business cards to billboards. They're responsible for employee communications, emergency communications, and that during a disaster, it's our job to get critical information to the media and to the public. And last but not least, they even put together the ceremonial portion of the council meeting that we're having right now. So with all that said, Mayor, I can't think of a more deserving group than this to receive an honor because of all that they do. It's not many of them, but they do a tremendous amount every day, making our community better every day. So we're very proud. We want to thank you and the council, and Betsy, for taking the time to recognize them and for all the support that you give us every single day. And Mayor, speaking of support, there's one thing that they would like, this is important to them, they'd like a selfie of them and all the council members together. So we're going to do a selfie. I'll show you, we'll do it just like this, and if I screw it up, Jennifer will tell me that I'm doing it wrong, so. All right, so get everybody around here, around the mayor and the council.
Okay.
It's going to be good, it's going to be good.
It can go all the way down.
All right, I got to do this with my right hand.
Yeah. I know, she's going to have to really have. Ready? Oh, you got to go the other way. There you go.
There we go.
See if you can get us on.
There we go. I see the mayor, I see the team squinching everybody. Councilperson, go behind the mayor. Go behind the mayor, councilman.
Wait, he's moving. He's moving.
Right next to the mayor, there you go.
Perfect, outstanding. Say hashtag.
Yay!
That's a good group. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. David can do anything. Thank you, we are grateful. We are grateful to you. We do have these awards for each one of you, we thank you. You need your eyeglasses, Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem squirted hand sanitizer into his eye. I say, I give everybody up, don't tell me any secrets. So he can't wear his glasses. What would we like?
I was working late the other night when we were having the floods out in Centennial, so she was working late with me.
Thank you. I knew you'd take care of our councilman. If he got caught in waters he couldn't handle, you would carry him out. This is one athlete, let me tell you. Meg has just really been super, she's super healthy, and so if you ever are fearful of needing physical help to take you, you've got her, yes. Anyway, we're so proud of you, thank you. Greatest selfie, wonderful. Thank you all for everything you do, we appreciate it. Thank you, David. It's wonderful, appreciate it. They are fun, they really, they're a great group and they are fun. It makes our jobs so much more pleasant and really fun every day, because we really don't know what they're doing half the time that they're doing what they're doing. Who's roped off this front row?
I did.
Was there a reason?
It's a real reason.
Oh, is there going to happen, we're going to have a party? We might have a party, okay.
Really?
All right, so for our final item today, I have the pleasure of recognizing a group of students from Sunrise Mountain High School. They have excelled in the aviation club. So I'd like to ask Sunrise Mountain High School math teacher, oh my goodness, are you doing this? I'm so sorry, I just am so rude when I have names that are difficult, and I should say Carolyn Goodman should be more difficult to say.
Ms. T.
Ms. T.
T.
P. I don't see, oh, that's her last name. Where are you? Okay, would you say your name, please?
Titiya.
I can do the Titiya. So we have this wonderful Titiya, our wonderful, wonderful teacher, and she will repeat her name, and it is insulting for me not to be able to say it properly, so my apologies to you. And co-advisors of the aviation club, Reza Karamus and U.S. Air Force Lieutenant John Canook, to join us here at the podium if you'll please come forward. These three individuals have been instrumental in helping students in the aviation club achieve their goals, including winning the National Aviation Design Challenge to promote science, technology, engineering, and math skills. They have won the national design competition. The Sunrise Mountain team was one of 79 teams in 33 states in Washington DC to compete in this contest. They brought the first prize back to our city, Las Vegas. As part of the contest, the students learned the fundamentals of aerospace engineering and flight, and used software to design and fly their own virtual airplane. Each school modified an airplane to fly from one airport to another, and was scored on how much payload the plane carried, how much fuel was used, and the time that the flight took. The students also submitted a one-page essay on how competition enhanced their knowledge of science, technology, engineering, and math. Their prize for winning the state competition was travel to Washington State where they were able to build an airplane. So without further ado, let me introduce these fantastic students, and I will ask them, please, to join us at the podium when their names are called. We have Joshua Carlson. He's already here, where are you, Joshua? Which one?
Right here, man.
Oh, is he cute? Okay, we have Jose Rodriguez, where are you?
He's not traveling.
He couldn't be here, he's traveling, he's out of state. Kenny Ellis.
Hey.
All right, another cutie pie. And Carlos Alvarado.
He's also not here.
He's not here. Oh my goodness gracious. Congratulations, and let's give them all a round of applause. Big time, this is super, super. Congratulations. You've been out in the sun. Hope you use sunblock.
I'm a lifeguard.
You're a lifeguard on top of all of this. Sunblock.
Hollywood Aquatic Center?
Hollywood Aquatic Center? Hollywood Aquatic Center?
Okay, you want to just keep live?
I'm working today.
Working today. Not here right now. You aren't. You're with us. And I understand that you want to become pilots or engineers, and we wish you the best of luck in these endeavors. We have a proclamation I want to present to Mr. Karamouz and some certificates for each of you students, which we will, here is our proclamation. And we thank you for this wonderful work, and we are going to probably ask you for some comments if you would like.
Sure. Happy to.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Very nice. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Goodman, the council. Thank you, Al Carter, for paving the way for this to happen today. Thank you, Jace, wherever you went, for being patient with me and all the emails back and forth. I'm ADD, so it was hard to rain in my scattered thoughts. I wrote some stuff down, but again, ADD, so I had to kind of do something like that. Really what I have here is a team of amazing people, and what we did, the story is so inspiring, because we took a brand-new club that we formed. But before we formed a club, I'd already entered him with Miss P. here into a National Aviation Design Challenge STEM competition. It turned out, we entered him into the toughest aviation challenge of the year for high schools, but you know, it didn't matter. So the kids showed up, she put some posters around the school, and they showed up randomly. Josh here was challenged by one of his friends, kind of like dared into it. He said, "Well, I am going to do something." And he pointed out a poster on a wall and said, "I'm going to do this. I'm going to join that club." And his friend's like, "You don't even know what that is." He goes, "Yeah, the aviation club." But that's kind of how it all started. So four random students from Sunrise Mountain High School entered in this national competition. We started in March of 2014, and by May 8, we won this competition. It was a six-week deal. And like Mayor said, when we won it, the big prize was to go to Washington State and actually build a plane by hand. So when we got there to the plant, the fuselage was on a jig, and it was just an empty fuselage, the engine hanging on a hoist, and the propeller sitting in a box. And the rest of the parts are in bins and sitting in boxes. That was on June 16. At 7:00 a.m., we started. On June 27, at noon, we finished that plane. On June 27, at 2:00 p.m., the FAA certified the plane. You can go on the FAA tail number look-up. 644SP, Sierra Papa, 644SP is the tail number. You can look it up. It was certified while we were up there. That plane, you can buy one like it for about $200,000 to $250,000. It's a real plane. And what's cool about it is they all got, the other two who are not here, everyone got to touch every part of the plane. The engine, you know, bend fuel lines, run electrical wires. Kenny here became a master of composites, working with carbon fiber and fiberglass. Josh became a master of all, and he was our most distracted student when he joined. He became the most focused towards the end. So it was incredible. Lieutenant Colonel John Canook here is F-16 test pilot, flew the F-15 Eagle in combat, and he was a big part of our volunteer team. Chip, raise your hand. Retired Colonel, F-16 fighter pilot, Chip Thompson, he was another part of our winning team. He came in and inspired the kids with some of his stories, and also, when we won, we had to figure out how to do presentations and how to get the kids to understand how to do this other part about, you know, spreading the word. So Chip came in and helped them learn how to do a presentation, PowerPoint, and all the rest of it, and they've done several now, so we're very honored to be here today. And who else? Did I miss anyone? All good? Okay. So we're so happy to be here today, and we want to continue to drive this winning equation across Las Vegas and Southern Nevada. My great vision is that we can repurpose some old industrial buildings and some abandoned shopping centers and put aviation community centers, so all the kids can have access to it. Yeah, we've got actually a business plan for that. So as they say, we have an app for that. Thank you all, I can.
And for any students or adults who are ADD, you said you're ADD? Believe me, you can achieve. Congratulations. We're so proud of what you've done. There are plenty of buildings that we can give you, and we hope you are successful. Thank you very, very much. Congratulations for the two students, too, that aren't here. Please be sure to congratulate them from us all, and we just look forward to what you're going to be doing next and where it will be. It's wonderful.
So we are going to work this fall on rockets and UAV applications and processes. So these kids are going to get to see firsthand some of the future technology that's coming into our industry.
Little drones? Drones, drones. Indoor drones. And outside eventually. Yeah, because what was it? Was it Google or Amazon said they were going to be delivering by Google? Oh, my gosh, can you imagine all those little drones out there over your house?
It's hard to take the mic away from me. So one of my other goals by 2020, I call it Nevada's 2020 Vision, is to make UAS Industries sort of center of excellence be right here in Las Vegas and Southern Nevada. And I head up to the Nevada Business Aviation Association, so with 325 members across the state, this good fellow here and Chip and them and them, they're all members, and we're doing some great things for the state. We're very excited to be here. Thanks again.
We are proud. Go Las Vegas. This is wonderful. And gentlemen, again, your swimming pool is?
Hollywood Aquatic Center?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Josh. Nice to see you. Do we want to, oh, yes, come? Council people, come forward with our wonderful team. Yes. Well, now we have to get Councilwoman.
Come on, Chip. Come on, Chip. Chip?
Are we too wide? Ready? One, two, three.
How to come up?
We'll have Sherm take one as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Fantastic.
Those are your notes? Okay. Did you want to say anything?
No. No. Sure, a couple of things. So just want to say, you know, we're from Sunrise Mountain High School. Awesome school, may I say. I mean, I had chances to go to other schools. I picked Sunrise Mountain High School, and I've been loving it ever since. The school's changed over the couple of years. I'm 17. I'm going to become a senior next year. It's going to be my last year. Before I did aviation club, I wanted to actually become a physical therapist, go to UNLV and major in kinesiology. But now, going into this wonderful program and going through the experiences I did, I'm actually thinking of becoming a pilot, go get my private pilot license, and maybe become an engineer, go into the aviation field.
Wonderful. Don't grow anymore. If you're going to be a pilot, you have to stop right now, because you won't fit in. But we wish you the best, this wonderful news, and congratulations to the school. Great. It's great to see what we do here. Congratulations. Did you want to say?
No, I'm good.
No? No, Miss P.? Nothing? Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, I have 20 minutes at 10. We are going to have a five-minute recess. Five minutes, that's all. We will be back here at quarter of.
Okay. Okay. Wonderful.
Thank you so much.
This is so exciting. You are so lucky. It's wonderful.
Yep, they're healthy. Okay, get in there. Push. All right, push hard. There you go. Good job, Jorge. All the way over. Yep, I got help.
Girls, how are you?
Push, push, push. Yeah. All right. I know. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. She'll run. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Okay, we are all ready to reconvene, and so we will turn to Agenda Item Eight. Is that correct, sir?
Yep.
Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the Agenda for Action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute. And I do have a card right here on Agenda Item Fifty-Nine from Daniel Ross. You will have time later on to speak again, but did you want to speak at this time? Hearing and seeing no one, we will move on to... There is. And please state your name. We don't need the address, just your name for the record. Good morning, sir.
Yes, my name is Daniel Ross. I'm not sure whether this constitutes public comment, since my property is directly affected by the decision that you make. I'm really a participant in this.
Okay. Okay, and your property is in which ward?
Ward Three.
Pardon?
Ward Three.
Okay. Well, this would be an appropriate time, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to meet with Councilman Coffin, who is the councilperson for Ward Three.
I haven't met with him, but I sent emails to every one of you on this subject.
Daniel Ross, R-O-S-S. Okay, thank you. Well, this is just public comment time and not dialogue time, so in fact that you've made your presentations, fine, and we'll move forward.
Can I wait until this is up for discussion?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard at this time? Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to Agenda Item Nine. For possible action, any items that the council staff or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting will be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. Item Number Thirty-Nine, Solicitation for Ambulance Services commencing December 2015 for the City of Las Vegas. Staff has asked that be obeyed till August twentieth, 2014. And Number Forty, Review of Suitability and Consider a Permanent Tavern License or Take Other Appropriate Action for the Crazy Horse Top Gentlemen's Club LLC, Crazy Horse Gentlemen's, at Twenty-Four Seventy-Six Industrial Roads. Staff has asked that be obeyed till August twentieth, 2014. That's my motion, and Mayor, I believe Councilman Beers would like to make a comment on the motion.
Please go ahead, Councilman.
Thanks, Your Honor. I was hoping we could get a comment from our staff on item Number Thirty-Nine as far as an update on that. This was presented as a pretty significant public safety...
Excuse me, Councilman, which item was that?
Thirty-nine, which is the Solicitation for Ambulance Services.
Okay, which has been asked to be obeyed, but do you want to make comment?
I'll just very quickly say that we're still having discussions with AMR, and we hope to have those completed here shortly, and then we'll have an item on the twentieth to deal with that.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Barlow?
I too would like to understand item Number Forty. In briefings yesterday, it was at least my understanding that there was going to be at least a discussion as to whether or not we were going to obey it or move forward with it, and I see today staff is recommending the abeyance, so what happened? Just give me some backdrop on why the abeyance now?
Ms. Fretwell, if you will respond to that, please.
Yesterday, we received a request from Councilman Coffin, in whose ward this resides, to have a two-week abeyance, and so we put that on the board at his request.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, then your motion has been made. There is a motion made by Mayor Protem. Please vote, and then please post. Councilman Ross is elsewhere. And Councilman Barlow, do you want to cast your vote, please? Sorry. Okay, thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on now to Agenda Item Ten. For possible action to approve final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting in May twenty-first, June four, July second, two thousand fourteen, special joint city council and redevelopment agency budget meeting in May twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. Mayor Protem may have motion to approve the minutes.
Move for approval.
Thank you. This motion, please vote, and please post. That motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven. Agenda Items Eleven through Thirty-four on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Please say so at this point.
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor, Councilman Barlow?
Yes, item Twenty-four, please.
Which one?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, thank you. Any other items? Okay, hearing, now may I have a motion, Mayor Protem?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items Eleven through Thirty-four, except for item Twenty-four.
Thank you. This motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item Twenty-four, please. For possible action to approve the installation of a permanent gate at the east entrance to Sierra Ostay Community on Arpa Way at Lake Mead Boulevard to reduce crime in the neighborhood. Fifteen thousand dollar traffic improvement capital fund project, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department has requested the installation of a permanent gate, Arpa Way at Lake Mead Boulevard, to close off the east entrance to Sierra Ostay Community in order to reduce crime in the neighborhood. Metro's Northwest Area Command, community-oriented policing unit, has been working with the property owners, managers, and tenants to decrease crime in the neighborhood, and feel that closing off this entry to the community will be helpful. The fire department has approved the installation of this gate. It is yours. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. My name is David Bowers. I'm a city engineer for City of Las Vegas, and this is an item that we've been working with, Councilman Barlow's office, as well as Metro, to make the area safer. As mentioned in your description, what we'd like to do is close the east gate to the Sierra Ostay Community, and we'd still provide pedestrian access, but this would be a vehicular crashgate, so fire could still get through if necessary, but pedestrians still trying to access the area would have that access.
This was an item that was in front of City Council, I recall the item. Had we at that point abated so that this discussion could come to some conclusion on this?
Yeah, I know it's gone in front of the Traffic Hearing Commission, it was approved there. I'm not familiar with the history at City Council.
Okay, I think Councilman Barlow will recall, because I remember the discussion about the flow of traffic and everything, so if you want to take over from here, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Bowers, did you want to share some additional information as it relates to this application? I mean, this item before?
Sure. Like I said, as I mentioned, what it's going to do is provide for a safer community. Metro would like to have one access point inside and out the community. It's for better, basically a better, safer community. The crashgate itself would be a metal gate that will cross the road. It will not have any type of mechanical or automatic openings to it, but it will have fire access through the fire department if necessary. Pedestrians will still be able to move in and out of the community through this entrance, but they will not be able to move their vehicles through there.
Yes. And Mayor and Council, the Northwest Area Command, as well as their collaborative community partner, Heroes United, have been working very diligently in this area, really helping to reduce and eliminate a number of crimes that have been taking in and around the Sierra Ostay Community. And at this time, I want to ask that the captain of the Northwest Area Command, please come forward, and your team as well, if you don't mind. And if there's anyone else here from Heroes United or any collaborative organizations, I would like to recognize them as well as they come down. Captain? If you can just please update the Mayor and Council with some of the initiatives that you have brought forward, working with, of course, the members of Liberty Baptist, Heroes United, and your law enforcement team representing the Northwest Area Command. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council members. It's great to see you all again. Saw a few of you last night on National Night Out, which was a great success for us.
Senator, announce yourself, so we have it for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. I'm Captain Chris Tumino. I'm the commanding officer of the Northwest Area Command substation out there on Two-Fifteen and Cheyenne, which comprises everything north of Charleston, everything west, pretty much of Jones, to include Mount Charleston and Indian Springs. I have approximately one hundred and eighty-five employees based out of that substation. Heroes United came about as a result of collaborative effort that we put together last fall. We did a study, and we had between November of 2012 and November of 2013, over thirteen hundred calls for service, many of them extremely violent in that particular neighborhood of Sierra Ostay, which really takes up a lot of time, effort, and energy on the part of the police department, as well as impacting the quality of life for the citizens and children of that particular community. So what we tried to put together was a broad-based coalition, both faith-based and secular, and brought some folks together in order to address the problem on a more of a global scale, instead of the traditional old-school response from the police, where we come in, take care of a problem, and leave, and then the problems resurface. So what we did was, we enlisted the support of Julie Murray, who is a part of the Moonridge Group. She's the CEO, sits on the board of Wells Fargo. She is extremely connected within the community in terms of bringing philanthropists to the table in order to support projects such as this. Pastor Matthew Tice from Liberty Baptist Church is one of the co-chairs as well. To my right, Sergeant Phil Merges. He is the sergeant in charge of our community-oriented policing squad at the Northwest Area Command, and the officers behind him are part of the program. We also enlisted Dr. Bill Sousa from UNLV in order to conduct a academic study of what we put together, so that we can replicate this, as we have generated a great deal of success so far. In the past nine months, we've basically dropped calls for service in that particular community approximately fifty percent as a result of the project, the effort that has been put forth by the folks that are involved in the project. And what we're looking at doing with this particular item on your consent agenda is but a small piece of it, is not the one single thing that solves the problem, it is one of a multifaceted approach that we've got. And by closing off the street, we basically have limited access to the neighborhood through one controlled point, where we are putting up a camera, which will be connected to our real-time crime center, which is part of the LVMPD Fusion Center, Southern Nevada Counterterrorism Center, located at headquarters, where we have officers able to monitor these cameras that are positioned throughout the valley, most notably down on the Las Vegas Strip, Fremont Street, and we are putting these throughout the valley as basically a means to be more effective and more efficient in providing police service to the valley. And then finally, for those council members that this particular item doesn't necessarily affect their particular wards, it does in fact affect their wards, and I will tell you why. The reason why it affects their wards is any time you have one location that is soaking up that amount of police resources, or any resource that we scarcely have as public servants, it limits the amount of service that we're able to provide to those other areas of town. And so by assisting us in this endeavor with respect to providing more efficient service to the Sierra Ostay Community, this ultimately allows us to more effectively deploy our resources to the rest of the Northwest Area Command.
Wonderful. Great report. Great report, Councilman.
So with that, Mayor and Council, and I really want to thank the Northwest Area Command, and of course you, Captain Tumino, for leading the charge on this and collaborating with the community, such as the Liberty Baptist Church, as well as the Heroes United, for collaborating to make our community, specifically in the northwest, a better place for all. And I really support your efforts, and you standing behind the boys and girls, as well as the parents that live in the Sierra Ostay Community, to make it a better place. And so I will move to move for approval of this item, subject to all conditions, if in fact the Mayor and Council have no further questions.
Council, Councilman, I see a couple standing in back. Were you there to make comments to this?
Just to support the Northwest Area Command and to add...
Do you want to come forward and state your name, sir, please?
My name is Mark Azadorian. I manage properties in Sierra Ostay, and I represent the owners and some of the tenants on the Heroes United Board. I'm here to ask for your approval on this gate. We've worked closely with Northwest Area Command. We've done, they've done a lot to bring this neighborhood down. We're seeing children playing in the street now. We're seeing ice cream vendors in there in the summer. People feel safer, but we can't stop yet. We need this gate. We need to control traffic in there. Anyone living in there is asking for the gate. They want a safer place to live.
Good report. Thank you very much for support. Okay, Councilman Barlow has made a motion, and we thank you. Thank you very much. Northwest Area Command has made such a difference, and we are so grateful to you and the men and women that work with you to help our city and our community, because we are one, and we know if you're in one place, you can't be in another place. So, there's a motion. Please vote, and please post. And that is unanimously approved, so wonderful. Thank you. Thanks. So Agenda Item Thirty-Five. Discussion for Possible Action on the Ratification of David Bowers as the Director of Public Works. Salary one forty-seven, one-one-four, and benefits general fund. And Ms. Fretwell, how lucky for you.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. I do think it's a lucky day for the City of Las Vegas, and a particularly special day for Dave Bowers this morning. Dave's been working with the city for over ten years. He's done a stint, two stints, at the legislature. He's an incredible engineer and has great experience here at the city and in the private sector. And for many of those reasons, as well as some incredible support from the Public Works employees, I believe Dave is the right person to lead the organization. Now, you all know that we restructured some things about a year ago to change Jorge Cervantes' responsibilities, and we've given him additional responsibilities for several departments as the executive director of community services. So basically, he's got tremendous responsibility for all the activities in the Development Services Center, with a few exceptions. And Dave is going to fill the role of Public Works Director that Jorge vacated for us. And I believe because of their incredible partnership over the last several years, that Dave is in a great position to step in, fill those shoes, bring a different perspective to the job, and do an incredible job of it. So I'm excited to ask for the ratification of Dave Bowers this morning as our new Public Works Director.
And Dave, this wonderful recommendation for this, and knowing how well you work with all of us, any comments? Can you tell us a little bit about your history, your background, so the public can know who you are, what you've done, and what your hopes are?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have a long history of engineering in my background. I started out near the St. Louis area, working on bridges, actually, designing bridges. I went into construction management, and then back into bridge and highway design, and then transferred out here, back in the two thousand four era, and had a job with the city. And once I realized who was at the city, how the city worked, I came in almost immediately. And ever since then, it's really been a great experience for me. A lot of good people work here, and it's just been amazing.
Well, we thank you very much, and so I would entertain a motion, please, if I may?
Move for approval.
Thank you. If there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Unanimous congratulations. We look forward to everything you're going to bring us.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, we're very proud. Wonderful. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Thirty-Six. Report from the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, the LVGE, regarding its annual performance goals for the upcoming fiscal year. This is in reference to all wards. And Mr. Art, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Bill Art, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me today is Jonas Peterson, who is the Chief Operating Officer of the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance. We are under contract with the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance as our regional economic development partner to deliver services for the entire community, including our constituents in the City of Las Vegas. And so I've invited Jonas to appear before you to summarize accomplishments that he and his team have accomplished this past year, with an emphasis on how it's benefited the city and its residents, as well as its businesses. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jonas.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of the council, and thank you for the chance to come chat with you a little bit about the remarkable progress and the results that we've seen at LVGA with partners like the city over the last twelve months. I want to get into that performance, but before I do, say a special thank you, basically a shout-out to Mayor Goodman, City Manager Fretwell, for leading our organization. We very much appreciate that. And then also to Bill Art, Patrick Sennett, the entire economic development team. You have a group of all-stars here that are really exceptional. We work with many different partners, and I can honestly say that your team stands out. They help lead not only city's effort, but our region forward together. So a big thank you right off the bat. And that's, it's important to, I think, recognize that in Nevada, one of our key strengths is the balance between a state structure, a regional structure, and local economic development work. All three need to work together in order for us to maximize results. We do that here, and there's unique roles for each of those entities. So again, appreciate your support. Now, in your background information, you have a whole bunch of numbers, key performance metrics from our organization over the last twelve months. The good news there, if you look at basically any of those key performance metrics, you'll see an organization that has grown rapidly and is meeting or exceeding virtually all of those performance metrics in a couple of the key areas: jobs assisted, economic impact. We are more than double, almost triple our results from the previous fiscal year. I'm not going to get into and bore you with all the specific numbers. Instead, what I'd like to do is share some talking points with you. Big picture accomplishment... Big picture accomplishments from the last twelve months, that's the presentation I've put together, and so I'll dig into that. Here's our top ten list. First, at number ten, raised 5.5 million dollars. This is through our Engage campaign, thanks to the support of many entities, including the City of Las Vegas. 5.5 million in addition to previous efforts payable over a three-year period of time that's allowed us to nearly double the size of our budget, nearly triple the size, the amount of full-time employees we have on staff working on community and economic development initiatives for the region. So that was a foundation of big change at LVGA. Number nine, we changed how we plan, how we budget. So every line item in our budget, you can look at where we put the dollars, how that relates to our strategic goals and objectives, and how those in turn relate to the performance metrics of our organization. All working together to be transparent, to be focused, to increase our productivity. That process has allowed us to push many more projects forward simultaneously. Number eight, we improved the client management process with city partners, county, state, and real estate partners. So this is an area of improvement for us. Not only now do we have our Economic Development Advisory Group where your team is working alongside ours and others on projects on a monthly basis, retention, expansion, attraction, moving forward, strategic initiatives together, that is happening. There's increased communication, shared databases, a new system in place now. In addition, we have formal partnerships in place with real estate leaders, SIOR, NAAP, other leaders to manage those real estate actions that just hasn't existed before. Big improvements to our process. Number seven, we launched Envy Angels. And when I say we, I want to give a lot of credit to Switch and another great company called Originate along with LVGA. This effort is designed to provide angel-level investment to startup operations throughout Southern Nevada. Just launched, and honestly, we're kind of waiting to talk about this in many ways until it's truly awesome. We're just getting started. But if this turns into what we believe it can and will be, we have a chance to change the entrepreneurial quotient of Southern Nevada, how we start up companies, how we help them grow, how we finance them as a community. So look forward to big things from LV, from Envy Angels. Number six, highlighted the growing and immediate need for large industrial space. We know from our real estate experts that we missed out on 150 businesses, 18,000 jobs over the last twelve months because we don't have the large industrial space to meet client demand. Huge missed opportunity for us. And not only are we behind the curve, other regions are moving forward faster than we are. We need to capture this opportunity moving forward. We need to build the type of buildings that those high-job-producing, high-wage clients are telling us they want in order to come to Southern Nevada. Many of those clients say they want to be here, they're being forced to other markets. An issue we need to pay attention to. Number five, launched BizConnect. And I need to, once again, so this is, BizConnect is the first truly regional, partnership-led, business retention and expansion effort for Southern Nevada. This is a big deal. And kudos to your, to your economic development team for really being one of those local leaders and implementing this effort, reaching out to businesses, one-on-one diagnosis, analysis of projects, providing, providing resources, helping businesses grow, create jobs. It's an elaborate process. There's a lot goes, that goes into it. BizConnect is changing how we do retention and expansion work in Southern Nevada, and your team is leading the charge on that, plus a regional effort of seventeen public-sector partners that have all bought in and are actively pushing BizConnect together as one region. Number four, leverage the media. This is kind of one of the new initiatives for us where we honestly haven't done enough in the past, but in the last twelve months, we contributed to sixty-eight regional stories around key economic development initiatives. Dramatic improvement for us, and we're morphing that into national platforms and hopefully some global stories and recognition about the great economic development work that's going on, the industries that are moving forward, the partnerships in Southern Nevada right now. So look for more of that in the future. Number three, the organizing and leading the Education Council. Education, as you know, is, it's critical to economic development. So by bringing together public, private leaders around this issue, we've elevated the discussion. We've helped the school district on budgeting. We've helped higher education on tech transfer. We've helped elevate that discussion and continue to work on a variety of initiatives to support and improve our educational delivery system. Number two, this goes back to the numbers. Nearly tripled the amount, the number of jobs that we assisted in attracting, retaining, expanding in Southern Nevada with partners. So we went from thirteen hundred previous year to 3,412. More than doubled, nearly tripled that amount of job creation, and it's continuing to go up. So I hope that next time I come and chat with you, we have even more good news, but dramatic improvement. And if you look in City of Las Vegas, companies like Cario, Order With Me, Assurian, Take-Two Interactive, the list goes on and on, great companies that we had the pleasure and the opportunity to work alongside your team to help them be more successful in the business environment. And number one, I think if you look at the big picture and you measure LVGE today by typical performance measures, whether it's jobs assisted, whether it's operating budget, staffing level, community development initiatives, if you look at those measurements and you compare us to peer organizations around the Southwest, we have quickly emerged as one of the leaders in the Southwest. And this is reflective, I think, of the big change you've seen at LVGA that could not happen without your support, without your staff, without the partnership that that we enjoy. So with that, I will say one more big thank you and would be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Wonderful. Thanks, Josh. That's a great report. Councilman Ross?
Thank you. Is there somewhere perhaps a website or can you provide to the City Council a listing of all of those fabulous companies that have been influenced by the LVGE and certainly our Economic Development Department? I mean, I, we, I think we all recognize the value and the importance of our relationship with you for, for all of us to be successful. But I want you guys to promote it more. I want the residents of this community to see what you're doing. You can tell us this all day long, and I'm glad you're here to give the report because whoever's watching this, and this will repeat, so people, some people will get it. But you guys need to promote, and I don't know how to do that. I don't, I'm sure that's not part of your budgetary budgets anyway, but I'd like this community to know how valuable an asset LVGE is, is to this community as well as our own Economic Development Department. So that's important to me, but I'd just really like to see a list of those businesses. You mentioned those jobs. Can you repeat through the mayor, of course, the, the amount of jobs created?
Yes. So previous year, we were at about thirteen hundred jobs assisted with partners, and then the most recent year that we're reporting on, 3,412 jobs assisted.
So you've doubled your-
Yeah.
You doubled in a year.
More than doubled.
Yeah. Do we anticipate that those job projection numbers to continue to increase with the success of the LVGE?
So yes, and then let me bounce back to your first question. I want to let you know that we will provide, we do have that list and happy to provide list of companies, all the details you could ever want. Right after the meeting, I'll make sure we get that to you. And in terms of future pipeline, even during the summer, which traditionally are slower months for business relocation, we've seen that pipeline continue to grow. We think we're going to finish out current calendar year very strong, and all indicators are moving forward right now. Now, that said, there are some of those obstacles on the horizon that are starting to kick in, in particular, large industrial space that we think is going to, is going to basically pull us from viability for some of those key, large, big, 500, 800, 300 jobs kind of projects. So that's going to make its impact next year, but judging by just the sheer activity in the pipeline, good things are ahead.
Well, if I can, Mayor, I think he also mentioned that you guys are the most successful economic development engine in the Southwest. How did you, how did you put that?
Yeah, so I won't, I won't claim the most successful, but I will-
Oh, I will. Go ahead.
-that in a relatively short period of time, we have moved into, if you compare us against our peers, one of the most productive. And by job creation, budget, community development initiatives, pipeline of activity, all those kind of measures, we are in many cases a leader, but right there among our peers, whereas three years ago, I don't know that you could have said that of the regional economic-
And those are bragging rights, Mayor and Councilmembers, that you guys can claim and we can have some, some small part of that. But I think we just need to give you every tool possible to continue the success, to double that job growth for next year. And I, I think it's incumbent that we as a local government body, as well as all the Southern Nevada government bodies, understand the importance of job creation. And every vote we make, subject to how many jobs is that going to create? Who am I going to put back to work? Who, you know, what's new in this economy? And I think all of us have been witness to the ever-increasing diversification of our economy because of organizations like yours and certainly our economic development arm as well as at the City of Las Vegas. So that's, that's huge and very impactful, and I don't want that momentum to slow down. So thanks for the report and I'm looking forward to seeing, seeing some more numbers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when you talk about the jobs that, that are being created and attracted, can you talk about, you know, the type of jobs that are being created and, you know, what people are coming here to, the type of jobs that are attracting them and, you know, what the future holds? Because is, is it primarily the casino industry or some other kind of targeted areas that people can come to Las Vegas and, and start a career?
Yeah, so a few points that I think are relevant there. If you look at where our region is at in terms of overall economic development, quantity and quality are both really important for us. Our unemployment rate roughly 7.6 speaks to the fact that we still need a high quantity of jobs. So we, we try and, and balance that with the, the incoming pipeline. At the same time, I can tell you that overall, the, those 3,412 jobs, the average wage was higher than the average, existing average wage for Clark County. So we're moving wages up. And if you look at some of even the high-quantity producers like Assurian, you know, a great number of jobs, but also boosting up the level of salary associated with those type of positions historically. So we're seeing a ratcheting up effect, which I think is the best way to go about economic development. You look at the type of job and try and move it up to whatever that next level is, we're seeing that, we're seeing that happen. Does that answer your question?
Well, Councilman Ross mentioned diversification. So if you, if you don't look at the casino industry, what type of jobs are like the top three that are being created in Las Vegas that people are, are coming here to fill? You know, and primarily professional type of jobs like you're talking about?
Yeah, so, and there's a different answer for existing and I think what's in store in our future. So existing, if you look at our operating environment, we're attracted to a wide variety of industries and you see that reflected in the, the type of attraction work. That said, there are clear clusters emerging in technology. And in the future, I was really excited to see that the group of high school students that won the national competition, because UAS is going to be huge for our region. It's going to be arguably, I think, the most important target industry cluster over the next five years for us. It hasn't really hit yet, but that's one of the, so that's one of the big ones on our horizon, along with logistics, advanced manufacturing.
Thank you. Josh, did you want to comment? Councilman?
Well, yes, and the name of the jobs that you're mentioning in your future, also the medical industry and healthcare. I didn't hear you mention that, and I was wondering, isn't that one of the ones that we're, will be expanding?
Absolutely. Yes, another one of our targets.
Well, thank you, Josh, for the report, and we're really proud of what's been happening, knowing that you metamorphosed out of the NDA, the old Nevada Development Authority, and seeing the changes, realizing, how long have you been with the LVGE personally?
Personally, fourteen months.
Okay. And can you tell us a little bit about your background? Where are you from? Where were you educated? What were you doing before you came on to LVGE?
Happy to. Born and raised Minnesota, North Dakota. From, so I'm from the Upper Midwest, grew up on a family farm, economic development-
And a Vikings fan, of course.
Can't claim that. No, they're-
Oh, okay. Good. Keep going.
No. Economic development's all I've ever wanted to do. So starting back, North Dakota State University, had a chance to be student body president there, student body president there and get experience to economic development early on. From there, studied at a variety of other institutions and have led economic development teams that, that did other amazing things in Arizona and California before making my way here to Southern Nevada.
Well, we certainly welcome you and hopefully you've got a pocketful of ideas and concepts as this particular unit of our region really grows and interconnects with the surrounding regional states because there are a lot of businesses out there that need to know about how wonderful it can be to open their businesses here with us. And we certainly know that Bill Art and his team have a huge fountain of information. And how many years, Bill, have you been with the city?
I've been with the city seventeen years.
Right. As young as he looks, he is really gray and older, but it does keep you young to have a good job that you love and to be part of this great community. So we thank you for the report. We hope you'll be back and keep us posted and that the collaborative effort here in Southern Nevada continues to grow. I know transportation's a huge piece of all of this. So I'm sure and knowing Tom Skanky that that was his forte in years past, that, that certainly is part of moving people around in jobs and getting people in and out of here. So we thank you so much. We welcome you back and certainly know you have good friends here in our city. So we thank you and please send our best to everybody out there off the 215.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Art. Okay, Agenda Item Thirty-Seven. Report for Possible Action Regarding the 215, oh, same 215, wrong, 2015, Seventy-Eighth Session of the Nevada Legislature. This is in reference to all wards. And everybody's running to the microphone, so I can tell this is a popular issue. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Ted O'Levis, your Chief of Staff. Joining me today is LeAnn Lee, our Government Affairs Officer, as well as Bob Ostrowski, who's our contract lobbyist with the Ferraro Group. They're here in the audience. Today, I'm here to provide a brief overview of the 2015 legislative session. This overview is similar to the briefings that we've been providing since the last session. I'll talk about the session in general, kind of the, the general facts, the committees that we've been tracking during the interim, our other efforts that we've been working on in the interim, and where we go from here. When I conclude this short presentation, I've asked Bob to say a few words on his thoughts about the upcoming session. So, some general information about the session begins on February 2nd. Local governments have to submit their bill draft requests by September 2nd. The city can submit up to three bill draft requests. This final number is, says that there's 319 bill draft requests. That's outdated. There's now 391 bill draft requests so far. You know, we're a little over five months out from the session, so this number steadily grows. Last session, there was over 1,200 bill draft requests. So the tsunami is coming. So we're preparing for that. So in between the legislative sessions, there's a number of legislative-related committees that meet to discuss legislative topics to prepare them for the 2015 session. And there's essentially three categories of those. One are the interim committees and studies. The second is the statutory committees, and finally, the non-legislative committees. In terms of the interim committees and interim studies, we have the interim committees being the interim finance committee, and this group makes the fiscal decisions for the legislature during the interim. So it's a committee that's made up of representatives from both houses and both parties, and they kind of run things from a fiscal perspective during the interim. And the Legislative Commission, which takes action on behalf of the legislature during the interim. See, the things still happen even when the legislature is, is not in session. In terms of the interim studies, there's a couple related to education, and one is an interim study on community colleges, and that had two subcommittees. This Academics and Workforce Alignment and a Governance and Financing Subcommittee, and then looking at K through 12 Funding. To note there is that in monitoring those, there were no takeaways from, from local governments or there was nothing that was implied that they would take away funding from the, the local governments. So we'll continue to monitor those committees between now and the session and during the session, of course. The statutory committees, these are some examples of those committees. It's kind of a laundry list. You've seen these before. We've been actively engaged in the Advisory Commission on the Administration of Justice, the first item that's listed there. And in fact, Lisa Morris Hibler is a member of that committee. And the Subcommittee on Medical Use of Marijuana, our own Councilman Coffin is a member of that. So we are engaged in these communities, and these are some of the things that we've been monitoring from a statutory perspective. monitoring from a statutory perspective.
Please, excuse me, Mr. O'Levis, just one second. Councilwoman, like.
I just would like to have a question. On the Subcommittee and the work that it's doing on medical marijuana, it has been confusing to me in that the number of applications we've had are clustered in certain areas, whereas we were told the whole idea was to bring this medical marijuana usage closer to the people, you know, just as you would a pharmacy. Is there a chance through that Subcommittee on Medical Use of Marijuana that some adjustment will be made as to, you know, people have not applied for certain areas that might need it and they've overapplied in other areas? My concern is if this is going to go up to the state and the state approves the list and sends it back to us, we're not going to cover the whole city, number one, most of whom, you know, everybody voted for it. How do you go about making a change? I was going to call Ticks Seegerblum and then I saw this and I thought maybe I should go through that committee.
Well, I think that both have opportunities, but I'd be glad to double back with you and Councilman Coffin and our business licensing group to have that discussion about how we could.
I just thought the problem that exists, and I'm hoping others are seeing that same problem, I'm assuming they are, is that we're not covering the whole city and we're over-covering other parts of the city if we do something afterwards and everybody's been selected. But then can you reopen it again? You know, those are the questions. So, okay, we'll meet with Coffin.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll just make this real brief. I thank you, I was appointed to that commission. Right now, it's mostly concerned, I guess, about the other fallout from the bill because the legalization of medical marijuana still does not protect jobs and so on, people who might have a trace, which is invisible and not, they're not impaired. So there's a whole bunch of work to do. Senator Seegerblum is accumulating all the ideas to put into a new bill, which will be considered. And Senator Seegerblum is one of your constituents. So I suggest have him over for coffee and bend his ear on everything that, you know, he should be doing because he knows he's got a long list to improve what they've started.
So is this.
So I think Senator Seegerblum's going to be carrying the bills. We don't have to use a bill draft.
Oh, no, I wasn't talking about using a bill draft, but so then you're recommending as a member of the committee that I contacted Seegerblum, which was my initial.
I'll be happy to have coffee with you, too.
Thank you.
Okay. So in terms of the non-legislative committees, this is a list of those. Some things of interest, our own Councilwoman Tarkanian is a member of the Commission on Nuclear Projects, but we also monitor the Economic Forum, the Workforce Investment Board, Homeland Security, of course, the Southern Nevada Enterprise Community Board. Councilman Barlow is a member of that, has been a member of that for a number of years. And of course, what they're doing in terms of the UNLV Campus Improvement Authority, we're watching that as well. So, other interim activities. So what else are we working on other than these committees that I just mentioned that are legislative or not, as the case may be? Well, we have and host quarterly legislative outreach sessions. You've been invited to those. That's where we bring in Southern Nevada legislators and try to update them on what we're doing, why we're doing it, and try to get them engaged in the things that are happening at the City of Las Vegas. We work closely with our community partners, including the Clark County School District as well as the Las Vegas Metro Chamber of Commerce. A big issue has been medical marijuana and the implementation, as was represented earlier. I really have to give a shout out to Karen Duddleston and her crew, who have really been at the forefront of that implementation process. It has not been for the faint of heart, so we want to thank her for involvement in that. The Southern Nevada Forum, you know, we've worked closely with the Las Vegas Metro Chamber, specifically LeAnn, who's been working with those subcommittees on their legislative efforts. As you recall, this relates to the meetings that we've had at UNLV and at the Fifth Street School and they've come up with some topics, including economic development, governance reform, K through 12, higher education, human and health services, and transportation and infrastructure. So they're looking at some things. We want to be engaged and assist them in those efforts so we know what's going on, what they're going to be bringing to the legislature. And finally, the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities. Councilman Barlow is a member of that board. Councilman Ross is the past president of the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities. And they have a list of BDRs that are coming in statewide into that group. We have a legislative committee that's looking at those and trying to cull that list down for consideration by Councilman Barlow and his counterparts. And so we've been working closely with them as well. This topic of interest list changes daily, but this is kind of on one page, the A to Z list. This could be 10 pages, but this is a general overview. Now, the things that you see on this list, from animal abuse, economic development, film production, mental health, property taxes, transportation, any one of those, there are already bill draft requests covering those topics. Now, as we've discussed, we have this bill draft request list and it's pretty generic, so the devil's in the details, but all of these are topics that we already know about. And that's not including things like consolidated tax arenas, enterprise funds, mining tax, tax abatements, education. So there's a plethora of topics that we're going to be faced with coming in the upcoming session. So some of the bill draft items that we've talked about, and as you know, during the interim, we've reached out to you and the City Manager's Office and the departments in trying to identify items that are our priorities. And here are some of the things that we've come up with. I'll go through these individually to talk about kind of where we're at with each of them. The Animal Abuse Registry, there is actually a bill that's being sponsored by Senator Menendo, so we plan on working with him on that. This changes to NRS 288, that really had to do with the potential of defining what a severe financial condition was. And so the Department, or, I'm sorry, the Department of Taxation is looking at some changes to address that issue, so we'll be working with them. Economic development and redevelopment, you know, we had a big bill last session, got the bill passed, and the question was, was are there any other changes that we need? Are there potential opportunities for the use of our set-aside funds? We've concluded that that's not the case. Energy conservation, this is a Tom Perigo item. This is really a community-wide initiative and Tom and his group from the community have found a sponsor for PACE legislation, Home Rule. This has been brought up by Councilman Coffin and other members of the council. The Nevada League of Cities does have a bill addressing that. And then finally, policing powers. We collectively have had discussions about what do we do on Fremont East? And that's where that came about. Is there legislative changes that are necessary? And as you know, we're making a great progress there, so we don't feel that there's a need to legislate any changes at this time.
I would like to add, there are two glaring omissions that I see. The legislature in its last session passed the more cops, which stalled at the county commission. I think that needs to be on here because we hear, we just heard from the Northwest Area Command, if they are putting so much emphasis into one area, they're drawing people from another. They can't possibly cover the city to say nothing of the county. And the other piece that I notice is glaringly omission, I saw omitted, but I did see mental health. I didn't see health, health and medical care, which needs to be on here because, as you know, we've discussed before, the impact of our insurers, I'm not talking Medicaid and Medicare, but this is a critical, safety first. You don't move into a community that isn't safe, too. You don't move into a community without quality medical care. And so those two things, to me, need to be included somewhere in this because wherever I go, wherever I speak, those are the first things I talk about. And so what do we do? And we can't just because it stalled at the county commission, with the support of all the mayors, all five mayors where they're saying, "We want more cops," that it died or stalled and not coming back. The legislature said, "You will." You have 15.15 cents to add. So I'd like to see those two things added very firmly.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. We'll, I'll double back with our friends at Metro, particularly on the more cops. And there is a Health and Human Services Subcommittee that we've been monitoring and I'll double back with the, you and the council on their efforts and where they're headed with some more specifics.
Because, I mean, while, obviously with the whole medical district, we're trying to improve upon and develop, there are the issues, though, of the bleed of top-quality physicians leaving our state because they're not getting the insurance payback that they are offering in other neighboring states. So we lose them and nor it's more about also these residencies, which we've chatted about. But I think that all becomes part of this whole development for our medical district, but I'm sure it affects the entire state as well. So I think those two are absolutely imperative that they be included, if you would.
Point well taken. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Coffin.
I'd like to second your suggestion. If we are going to adopt these ideas as actually the policy of the commission, of the council, to be sent to the legislature, we should be putting things like that at the top of the list. And, you know, these are all good ideas, but I don't know what the idea is within the idea, so to speak. There's a bill, maybe there's a bill somewhere, but maybe it's also just an amendment to another bill, an existing bill. Or maybe these ideas are bills that an assemblyman or senator would be privileged and pleased to be able to introduce for us, which we could wholeheartedly support. And chairs of committees have extra bills. And all of those things, which are what look like ministerial adjustments, perhaps, contained in these, except for one, and that's Home Rule, they could be diverted into other areas to get them introduced and we could still support them, just as strongly as any other idea that came out of our city staff. But this Home Rule implies a lot and I think it's, and I thank you for adding it to this list because a month ago it wasn't on your list, but it really ought to be paramount. And of course, there are implications with that. I mean, it includes more authority on police powers, even though we recognize that we're merged with county on police. We would have greater influence in that equation, I think, if we had Home Rule, both county and the city. Also, I think there's no question that you take the discussion that the mayor had, it wouldn't take much to make a change in the funding if, in fact, it simply was less bogged down with detail. And now we know the Gibbons Rule requires two-thirds vote on tax measures, but I'm not sure that that is on tax measures that are deferred to another body to vote on, as they did with the county commission. But then the legislature added the killer by saying two-thirds of the county commission needed to vote for a tax increase. Well, that's just bold because that just completely denigrates local Home Rule, local government. We know the problem, but does a guy from Elko know the problem? You know, it's just, he doesn't. And we don't really know his problems, but we do know ours and we know that the solution is in the hands of the legislature. So that's why I think that Home Rule, or at least what we have fashioned as a functional Home Rule, ought to be really our number-one item and it ought to be such that it is our, we may not even have to ask for a bill on that, but we have got to make it our prime effort with the League of Cities. We need to ask for their help. And if they don't want to help us, if some of them are lukewarm or they've traded away their position, and that happens a lot, right? You've seen municipalities have a bill that they want and maybe the league is supporting another bill and they bail out on us. They bail out on us. And it only going to take the city and the county working together, all the cities here, as Mayor's referenced, all the mayors and the county commissioners to get up there and say, "We want this." And it's only going to happen with brute force and that means us having to go up there and remind our colleagues who share elected office with us that we really mean it and we really need it or we cannot take care of the concerns of their constituents, which are our constituents. So I like, I don't even know what the ideas are, but I'll tell you what, the one we started fighting for, we can't denigrate, we can't put it in second place or even fifth place on a list, because that looks like a laundry list. And that is definitely not something I couldn't, I could vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ross?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Coffin, the other cities do understand what's going on with the legislative process and I'm not going to argue with you on the importance of every local government reaching out to the legislature. I will say this, for our local government, we are in a unique position to have Councilman Coffin, Councilman Beers on this board because of their unique perspective of what goes on at the legislature and how actions by the legislature affect local governments. And I think that we're in a very unique position to keep our eyes open, to keep watching and understanding what's happening up there. And Councilman Coffin and Councilman Beers, you two have, well, we all do as elected officials, but the opportunity to communicate our concerns, Mayor, to those lawmakers on the things that they would do to adversely affect our government or Elko or any of the other local governments. And I can assure you, Councilman Coffin, that the League of Cities keenly aware and active of issues, both north and south, that affect local, small municipalities and the larger municipalities in the state. It certainly has been that way since I've been involved with the league for nine years now and Councilman Barlow, you know, shaking his head in the affirmative, he, I think he would agree with me, that that doesn't happen anymore. That, you know, the city may be moving forward with an initiative, our city, but the league may be doing something that's negative or adversely affecting. We've kind of fixed that over the past several years. It doesn't, that doesn't happen. Communication takes place, we're in constant contact, we have regular meetings, we reach out to those other local governments, they reach out to us. And I think that's a very valuable tool as we send our message as local governments to the Nevada Legislature. So I appreciate your comments, Councilman Coffin. But, Mr. O'Levis, with the mayor's permission, I'd kind of interested in getting into the rest of this report, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's a good report. I just wanted to say one more thing, Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Ross. You're absolutely right. I would like to see, then, that the League of Cities, which meets in six weeks or five weeks at the Texas Station here in Las Vegas on its annual meeting, to take functional Home Rule up as its most prime issue. The proof will be in the votes of the members there and their commitments to carry that forward to the session.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. You know, we do appreciate your involvement in this process and we need your involvement in this process. Home Rule is very important. Your message is loud and clear, the other comments that were made. Yes, Councilman Barlow? And I also wanted to include on this item, your request to look at the crosswalk safety as an item. We know that there is some community activity going on in that regard and we'll be engaged in that as well.
And if I may, just wanted to just interject because Councilman Ross is dead on. I would encourage, being that we have Councilman Bob Beers and Councilman Coffin, former legislators on our board, I understand that we all have busy schedules, but I would highly encourage you to really, if you have the time, to get involved with the Nevada League because you all bring a complete different perspective and knowledge to the board that will be very helpful to cities because you all have basically been on both sides of the fence. And so I would highly encourage you. And we can surely use the leadership and the institutional knowledge that you all bring from the legislature as it relates to a lot of the bills and a lot of the conversations that are being forged by small and big cities throughout Nevada. So I would just like to put that on your mind for you to consider. Thank you.
And if you will, Mr. O'Levis, please continue.
Okay. And finally, the next steps. We're in the process of developing a state legislative platform. This is similar to what we do for our federal plan and it will be a list of issues and our positions on those issues that we'll share with you. It's one of those kind of documents that's kind of always in motion because things are coming up that we need to add and so we'll have that prior to the beginning of the session. As was mentioned by you all, we need to continue to work with our state legislators. We have, I think it's 25, 25 legislators that represent the City of Las Vegas. And maybe it's just a little piece of it, maybe it's all of it, but 25 folks that have a piece of the City of Las Vegas. And our, the other government agencies and our counterparts, Metro and the School District and the Metro Chamber and others. We've got to continue to look at the interim legislative activities and prepare for our next outreach sessions. We have two more before the session. sessions, we have two more before the session, and you're all encouraged to attend those, it's a great way for us to talk about what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Mayor, can I pause in there for a moment?
Yes, please.
I just want to emphasize how important those meetings are, Mr. Olivas, and how effective they have been about sharing our priorities with Southern Nevada lawmakers, so, good work, thank you, Leanne, for what you're doing in those meetings, and Mr. Ostrowski, because they're very important, and would, as Councilman Barlow just suggested, that all of us get involved with that and participate in these meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
And if you would, as we go into meetings with the legislative, current legislative representatives, I would like to ask that you put a little asterisk or let us know unless it's illegal, who has competition and is filed for 2015, who is in a race that they may be replaced, and so we know who those other people might be and can be doing our work with them as well.
Absolutely, you must have read the script, because that's a part of our continuing effort to make sure that you're up to speed on everything legislature between now and then, and we will certainly do that. If I may, Mayor Goodman, I'd like to turn it over to Bob Ostrowski to kind of get his perspective on what he sees for the next session.
And we're so glad he's with us, what a wonderful job you've done all these years for us, we're so proud of you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, I just wanted to take just a couple of minutes to give you my high-level view of where things are going in Carson City, and I don't think it's any surprise that the big agenda hasn't changed a whole lot, we're still going to be talking about budgets, and we're still going to be talking about revenue, which is the T-word, taxes, and I think there will be a significant discussion this session about taxes, I think you'll see that Mo Dennis has a bill draft, I think bill draft number one about taxes, there's no language yet, but there's a draft, I think the Speaker, America Patrick, is working on some bills relative to taxation issues, and I think it's our job in Carson City is to leverage the city's interests in those discussions, they're going to be talking about live entertainment tax, they're going to be talking about cap, the property tax caps, they're going to talk about depreciation, they're going to talk about sales tax on services, I think there's a broad number of issues which the legislature will discuss, and I grant it, a lot of that hinges on the education initiative and the outcome of that vote, I think if the public supports that initiative, it somewhat diffuses an effort in Carson City to take on taxes as a legislative matter, since it was handled as an initiative matter. If that initiative fails, I think there'd be a lot of pressure on the folks in Carson City to try to fund up a budget. Gathering up the votes, as Councilman Coffin referred to the Gibbons Rule, about two-thirds, is a very, very difficult political thing to do, but there's an awful lot of talk about the fairness between the way we use caps on business as opposed to those on residential property, all those things are issues, I think they're all of which have an impact on our future budgets, and on the citizens that live in our various wards that we need to respond to, so we'll be watching those issues very carefully, because there's subsets of those fundings, K through 12 and higher ed, higher ed, for example, is having a long discussion today about graduate medical education, which you raised earlier today, and how important that is to the economic development of our hospital system, and a number of doctors who eventually decide to make Southern Nevada their home and provide services to our citizens, those issues are all going to be discussed, there are bill drafts available on graduate medical education already, as a reference, there's a couple of groups we participated in, Mayor, the group called Heels, which is a Southern Nevada group made up of broad business and school interests on how to improve healthcare in this community, so there are a number of things there. Given all of those things, and the fact that the governor is very focused on economic development, which to him is jobs, 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 which I think is important to us, we live in, some of our little detailed issues, as we talked about before, ministerial issues, as maybe Councilman Coffin referred to them, get caught up in what I call the noise of the legislature, they become the secondary issues, they're not secondary to the folks that are impacted by them, but in the big picture of Carson City, they're the little bills that get shuffled around and occasionally get traded around, even when you don't think you're in play, in exchange for some of these bigger issues, that's the way the life of politics in Carson City works, it's our job to see that every bill, and there are many, Senator Gocicchi's bill on local control, Dilden's Rule stuff, those things are vastly important to us, and I don't call those ministerial, as you suggested, that is not, that's a huge policy issue, but we have to fight every day to do that, and I think this session is all about leveraging ourselves, how do we leverage the interests of the city onto a whole myriad of bills which impact us, because we had some big victories last time, and we've got work to show the legislature that we, those bills they pass sneak into development, that's going to create jobs, they're going to create infrastructure, they are going to be a payoff to the folks who live in Southern Nevada, who are in their districts and in your wards, so, that's kind of the big overview, we're looking forward to it, it's coming very quickly, of course, we don't know the outcome of all these election matters, whether they be initiatives or individual campaigns, but I'll make sure we provide, Mr. Olivas, with, we've got a list, breakdown of who's running for office and what the various registration numbers are in those districts, Republicans, Democrats, independent voters, and libertarians.
I would like to add, is never before, to my knowledge, in Southern Nevada, has there been a marriage and a collaborative effort of mayors, and we have a very tight bond, and there's a voice, a stronger voice than just one voice, if we can pull ourselves together where relevant, where it's pertinent. The other piece, you know, that always continues to bother me, is that all of us in our various jobs, especially here at council, subject to the open-meeting laws, and it is amazing to me that the most powerful body, our state legislature, which dictates to us what we can and cannot do, is not subject to that same open-meeting law, and I don't know if that is in the founding constitution of our state, but I think our public is mature enough now to have that same service available to the general public from the state legislature, I'm sorry.
Interesting enough, I think for the record, Bob Ostrowski, County Commissioner yesterday, had some lengthy discussion about open-meeting laws relative to their new UMC Advisory Board or Board of Directors, I don't know what the name is, whether or not they had the right to go into closed session, and what are the things they could discuss in closed session, because they have, potentially looking at a bill draft related to what they're permitted to do, so, those kinds of open-meeting law discussions, and I think there was a lot of, you'll see, you know, having open government is what our citizens want and deserve, and I understand, you know, the...
Was that part of the founding constitution of the state? That where did the inability of the legislature, or the lack of necessity for the legislature not to function under the same open-meeting law that we at the grassroots levels have to do?
I really don't know, perhaps council could tell you, but I don't know what, how that derived.
Our legal will tell us.
It's not in the Constitution, it's state law, and the state law only covers local governing bodies, they deliberately did not cover the state legislature, so by omission, they are not covered.
And so were that to be something, how would one go about moving that?
The state legislature or a citizen initiative would have to occur that would make that part of state law.
And so it would have to go over a period of years, a plebiscite would have to go to the vote of the people, and then, over two years, I would, I mean, it has to be a sequential, it's too major, or no?
For constitutional amendment, it would be, but for a simple legislative change, it would just be an initiative and a vote of the people, or a vote by the legislature to impose it on themselves.
Okay, I'm sure that I would not be very popular at the legislature, but at my age, that is not relevant, so, and I see Councilman Beers has something to say. It's pithy, it best be pithy.
Well, no, it's not, actually, Your Honor, having lived in both bodies, I would caution the world that, in my opinion, the open-meeting law has done more to eliminate transparency in government than anything else. As you know, the day before every council meeting, the full staff sitting down here below us meets with three members, where we have robust discussion of every item on the agenda, and then two hours later, they meet with the other three members of the council and have a similar robust discussion of every item on the agenda, so when we roll around to Wednesday, and we go through the agenda items, we no longer have a robust discussion about the agenda items, I think the seven of us, excuse me, have asked many probing questions about these agenda items in those meetings, and often they're so probing that there is no immediate answer, and the response is, you know, "We don't know the answer to that, we didn't think about it, but let us get back to you later today," which they do, and frequently, in fact, usually, the answer makes complete sense, and we have done our elected duty of ensuring robust debate of all these weighty decisions that we make on behalf of the 600,000 taxpayers in the city of Las Vegas. We just do it behind closed doors in the name of, apparently, compliance with the open-meeting law, so, I would caution the council that perhaps the solution to this isn't applying the open-meeting law to the legislature, thus ensuring that its business is driven behind closed doors, perhaps the answer is changing the open-meeting law to ensure that we have robust public discussion of these matters.
Well, I thank you, and I absolutely disagree with what you said.
And that's fine.
And which is why, because that is the public forum, and having the experience of living with a gentleman who was 12-years mayor here would tell me how he would spell an entire day talking with individual council persons, I learned in my first year very quickly, having met with two at a time, so three meetings, I would get through two of the meetings, we'd have wonderful conversation, I'd get to the third meeting, and somebody would come up with a concept that totally changed what had gone on with the two prior meetings I'd held, so I decided then and there, I was never going to do that again, that I was going to wait for the open dais right here to have the conversation, ask the probing questions, and make sure that it is public, and that the public does understand, so they can get a sense of what we do collaboratively on a vote when we get there. What has bothered me all these years, for the 50 years I've lived in Nevada, is that while we are forced to this open-meeting law, as are so many other bodies, that what goes on at the legislature, and has been for 50 years, deals are made, you support my bill, I'll support your bill, you have no idea what's going on, the most reasonable bills somehow disappear from the face, and there are issues why this is, even if in fact, we find, because we are a city management type of government in Nevada, because we happen to have a wonderful city manager and a great staff, and obviously, there are issues we can all ask for more background on, to me, it is the quality of the people with whom you work to get us the information, it's a level of trust and belief in their truth that what they're giving you are the facts, whether it's through our licensing, or it's through Public Works, or it's through the city manager's office personnel, whatever it is, and so this is something that for these 50 years has really stuck in my craw, because our government has to ultimately have that dialogue with exactly what you've said, that there's been background checks, that perhaps one of us sees something and can make the mention to our management, bring us the information, but there's never anything that is done that can be you and I meeting together, and me buying something from you if in fact I trade off something, because you have to do this all publicly, and so it's just a discussion to be had, and it's been a passion of mine, because I am totally about if it's good for all of us in Nevada as governing officials trying to serve the public as best we can, and if we're not doing a good job, then get rid of us and don't vote us back in, but it's what does happen up at the legislature, as much as you can go out with a great and authoritative statement about something that's really wise and good, it can die and be buried, because there's a deal being made, and I don't see that happening here, proudly say that, and maybe you have information, I don't, Councilman Beers. Yes?
Your Honor?
Councilman Coffin?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd offer two more points, one is an example of how the open-meeting law obfuscates governments' processes, and that would be the ongoing negotiations between the city and AMR regarding our ambulance services, this was presented to us at our meeting three weeks ago as a critical item of public safety, and I believe that it is, and during these series of meetings that occurred yesterday, there was robust discussion amongst the city council members, three at a time, and city staff, on what progress has been made, today, the residents of the city have heard none of that, the item has been obeyed, and that's just one example, in my opinion, and then the other thing is, I'm not disagreeing with you that the open-meeting law should be applied to the legislature, I just disagree with you as to why, I think that the purpose of having the open-meeting law applied to the legislature is so that they can see how this is truly an example of unintended consequences, which is the one true law of the legislature, in my opinion, having spent 10 years there, Senator Coffin may disagree, because he spent longer than I did.
No, he's laughing down here, I can hear a chuckle.
He was there longer than I was, but if we manage to get the open-meeting law to apply to the legislature, I suspect it would result in some significant changes to the open-meeting law, because they too will come to the understanding that this beast drives the business of government away from the view of the people.
Thank you. Okay, anyway, yes.
Thank you, Mayor, for the second time, or maybe the third time, putting on legislative etiquette here, I endorse what Councilman Beers has said, he's absolutely right, the people who are watching this program here and/or perhaps in their living room have no idea of the things we discuss, because after all, it would take two days for a council meeting, I suspect, to do it properly, maybe even three days, it could be done, but we're a lay group, so we have other things to do, I think that the legislature will never put itself under the open-meeting law, it actually functionally does for a while, notice requirements as much as possible, but they could never end the legislative session, you see, when they went from an unlimited length to 120-day maximum, subject to the call of the governor, the legislature lost an enormous amount of power in our state government hierarchy, in fact, it's the weakest of the three branches, instead of being co-equal, because in going to 120 days, they now then are held hostage by anything the governor doesn't want, and the governor can have his troops line up and say, "Stall this to the end of session," and that's the end of a good idea, and/or he can call, if he feels there is a good idea, he can call endless special sessions until that good idea, in his opinion, passes. So, really, the legislature is already one of the weakest legislatures in the United States, and I wish people could understand that, but go to the bank on that, that's absolutely true, they only meet every two years, so, the open-meeting law was contemplated for bodies that continuously meet, we meet continuously, in a sense, compared to the legislature, they could never wind up their business if they were under the open-meeting law because of the notice requirements, you would never end, 120 days would become 240 real quick, so, and that wouldn't make the public happy, so there's going to be sausage made behind the scenes, there's no question about that, but, Mayor, you have to, you know, know how strict this darn thing is, you were meeting with two council members at one time for a while, I don't know how long you continued that, but if you met in succession with, as you suggested, with other council members, you were making the open-meeting law for a while.
Mayor, 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 may I?
That could put you in a terrible bind.
Just very quickly, say something, I think it's important, one, if you guys would like for us to have a BDR to update or change the open-meeting law, this is a great item to do that, if you would like for me to put another discussion item on, an upcoming agenda that allows you to discuss our briefing format, how it applies or doesn't apply to the open-meeting law, et cetera, I am happy to do that as well.
Let me finish, Betsy.
But I think we've kind of really gone down a track here that...
I'm going to finish my idea, Betsy, hold on just a second, because we're thinking alike, but I wanted to add one more thing to what I was saying before you interrupted. You see, because Councilman Beers knows and understands, in I think a much more elegant manner, and has stated it, that the best ideas don't go public, so the best government doesn't go public, and may I suggest this, the nightmare of the F Street debacle, whereby innocent but uncaring civil engineers in Carson City in the Highway Department designed a freeway... Carson City in the highway department designed a freeway interchange that blocked access to the West Side, historic West Side. What had did is echo through the chambers. I didn't know until 2011, and the 2009 session passed a bill forcing the city of Las Vegas and the state highway department to spend 30 or 40 million dollars. And we have spent a good 25 or 30-year at the city as our responsibility for nothing to open up beautiful construction and cut it open and make a new tunnel where one, where no tunnel had ever existed before. The point is, when I came here in 2011 and I found out what had been going on behind the scenes two years earlier, I was shocked. Because our lobbyists and I think maybe the mayor and a couple of council members were getting beat up behind the scenes by a couple of tyrants in the legislature who were holding our main bills hostage. If we didn't agree to chip in many millions of dollars to, um, to help, you know, help some legislator's ego and protect his legislative backside, then we would, we wouldn't have known. And I'm gonna say to you that if we run into some sort of a, of a, of a box and we're being threatened by legislators, or we're being gently reminded by legislators that our bills aren't gonna pass unless we support something else that may or may not be supportive, may not be good for us, or maybe good for the League of Cities, we need to know about it. And I think, you know, more than you calling and saying, we're getting hell, I think I wanna hear it in open meeting. If it has to be a special set, a special council meeting, Mayor, I want you to call it. Because it's important that we hear about this so that we expose those people who become tyrannical, especially toward the end of a session. I've seen it happen. People outgrow their genes, and then, uh, anything can happen, and, and they become little lords, uh, and their fiefdoms up there. So I'm really, really hoping that this session we can have in open discussion, this kind of thing that happens. Because just the fact we could have a talk about it could prevent it. Just the fact that if the mayor threatens to go public with all of this stuff and have an open special city council meeting, I think it would extinguish a lot of that stuff. And we'll put a little ice all on it by bringing it out in the air. So I really, really wanna be kept up to date. We all do. And especially when we start to get into a box where we are starting to have to make choices. You know, you're paid to make some of those smaller choices and tell us because it's necessity. But when it's a big thing like home rule, it, it's just gotta be out in the open. We gotta know who's leveraging us. And I'd say one solution to this, because you now have a partisan issue on taxes, because a minority of either party can dominate. The Nevada Public, I guess the Nevada Policy Research Institute has had a proposal for four or five years now on taxation. And I, I want Democrats, and I am a Democrat, I want Democrats to take a look at that. Let, let, you know, they're supposedly nonpartisan, but we know they're primarily Republican. I say, let's let them get together. Let's let our people from both parties, because we're nonpartisan up here, but we're victimized by the partisan antics that happen. They should look at this method of taxation. If it can be endorsed by members of both parties, they can abandon the party labels and we'll get what we need. And I think most people didn't know what that proposal is. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. I just, I wanna thank you. And I know your job up there and everything that you're doing, and our legislators who are well-intentioned all the time. I believe in that. It is a process. It is just about what we live every single day. I am a registered nonpartisan purposely to service both parties, or all three parties, or four parties, and the people of our community. And so it is about servicing the people in this state and doing it all of us, and that's why we do our jobs to the best of our abilities. So whether or not, as you go forward in briefings in the future, Ms. Fretwell, and you have the conversation, do they want this, do they want that? To me, that's the way to go, not to at this point, just get a feel back. Um, it's just, it was an issue, I'm sorry I brought it up, because it's turned into a 15-minute dialogue, which it wasn't supposed to do. It was just a statement and a question, which our attorney has answered for me. And, and we appreciate everything that you do at the legislature. We appreciate what the legislators are doing. And it's an ongoing battle. So we are there to help and move things forward at the legislature. I just wanted to mention, we are in a unique spot if you need a broader voice for the mayors of the five municipalities. If in fact there are pertinent issues to work through, where you need a bigger voice, it's there. So we thank you very, very much. I didn't know if that was the end of your report.
Um, just, just very briefly, Mayor Goodman, and, um, members of the council, for the record, Ted Olivas. The items that are depicted on, on this last chart here are what we recommend that we do between now and the session. And of course, your voice is very clear on our communications, and we wanna make sure that you're up to speed on everything that we are doing. We are proposing that we not have any city-specific bill draft requests, but that we work with those state legislators and other organizations that have similar interests to the things that we've been talking about and work with them in a collaborative effort. So that's what we're proposing here this morning.
Well, and compliments to you and to Bob, Leanne, the whole team, and of course, Betsy, as to how well we did do in our last legislature with very, very important issue, critical issues to us. So, I mean, you really are pride to the city, and we thank you. We thank you for your devotion to the people of our community and what you do, and for your nice report there.
Thank you. I think we need a motion for the direction-
It's a report only, no motion is required? Unless you would like it, because that would be helpful?
Yes, that would be helpful.
What would you like the motion to be?
Uh, that we continue to do the things that, that we've talked about doing. I don't wanna beat a dead horse. And that we not do any BDRs, but continue to work with you on those same topics and those folks that are also engaged in that.
I would hate to not say anything at this point-
Okay.
...because you never know what's gonna happen-
Okay.
-and what you're gonna come to and what's gonna come out of the next few months.
Okay.
But that to support the presentation with the suggestions from council?
Mayor, may I just make a real quick recommendation?
Okay.
The staff's recommendation is that you, uh, accept the proposal that we develop a legislative platform prior to the legislature beginning, and that we not submit any bill draft requests specifically. The reason why we're asking for your direction on that matter today is that if you want to propose specific bill drafts, we have to have them turned in by September 1, or August 31st, or whatever. So we have one more meeting to deal with that. So our, our recommendation, and you may choose not to follow that today, but our recommendation, as you say, you give us direction to develop the legislative platform and submit zero bill drafts for consideration on behalf of the city. If you're uncomfortable with that today, let us know, and we'll have to put another item on with specific bill drafts ready-
But back out of that, if you would.
-at the next meeting.
If in fact someone were, um, opposed to that because of the BDR, what, what is the length of time to develop that bill draft? What do you need? I mean, it obviously can't be accomplished in three weeks.
Well, there's a, there's a format, and what we will have to do is we would have to turn in the format. So if, for instance, you did wanna take up, not to bring a difficult topic, but you wanted to change the open meeting law, at next meeting, or right now, you would direct us and approve a bill draft regarding the open meeting law. We would then work with the city attorney's office to draft the actual language that we would submit for a bill. There are certain timelines associated with us submitting that. Um, usually, we're the first bills to be introduced because we have earlier timelines than anybody else in this process when we submit bills. Uh, most of them end up getting prefiled, in fact. So it's, it's completely up to you. You don't have to tell us today. If you would like a second agenda item that's specific to designating bill drafts at the next meeting, we're happy to do that. Um, and, and go from there. But we have to do the work very quickly-
Okay. What is the latest, what is the deadline, assuming things move along in the next couple of months? And here we are in the beginning or mid of October, and we realize we would like to submit a bill draft?
We would have to work through a legislator, or a committee, or a committee chairman, or leadership, depending on the timing, the nature of the bill, and whether or not it needs an exception.
So it is possible to do, it's just at this-
It just wouldn't be the city council's discretion. We would have to have a willing partner at the legislature who had the ability to do it, meaning they hadn't used all their bills, for instance.
Okay.
So Mayor, in light of that, if I may, um, Mr. Strofsky indicated that we had some significant successes in our last legislative session. I think I would make a motion to accept Mr. Olivas's report, as well as direct staff to continue down this, the direction you're heading without any bill draft, bill drafts. And we take a, I hate to say this, but Ms. Fretwell, you remember in 2005, sitting in a briefing, uh, my first experience in first legislative session, I, I stopped staff from giving me the briefing about the legislative process and said, wait a second, we're protecting ourselves from the legislature? Remember that moment? And it was an epiphany for me because we were in defensive mode. And I think, I think that's where we need to be today. We need to be watchful of what bills may come down the pipeline that will adversely affect not only our government, but local governments in general. And I think that's very significant, that we hold that pattern and, and stay on that path. I don't think it's as significant right now that we present any bill drafts, especially a bill draft, in my opinion, would die an early death.
And this is in a form of a motion, then?
That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion, everyone. Please, let's vote on it. And then we'll go from, we'll take comments, but let's vote on this motion. It will either pass or die. Let's see where we are, and then, uh, we'll have our comments.
Are you not going to take any discussion of the motion prior to voting?
Um, at this point, let's vote on the motion, please. And if it doesn't pass, it, you wanna repeat your motion, please?
Let me try this again. I would move to accept Mr. Olivas's report, um, and, and direct staff to continue down the current pathway of monitoring existing bill drafts without the city of Las Vegas actually drafting their own bill draft at this session.
Mayor Goodman?
And if I may just, well, we'll go to Councilman Beers, and then Coffin, and then you, Councilman Barlow. I wanna know, I am voting in the affirmative because of the response Ms. Fretwell just gave me about wanting down the road if we need a bill draft to be able to hook on with a legislator, which I am confident we can get done. So I wanted you to know that I am voting in that affirmative. Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will be voting against this motion. As late as yesterday, there was some discussion about a potential bill that would address a component of our Fremont Street issues. Um, a statute that's been passed in California that we might want to look at proposing for Las Vegas. Uh, and because we do have through the month of August to make that kind of a decision, I think it's premature to make a decision to not have any bill drafts at this time. We can make that decision formally in two weeks. Fixing Fremont Street is, I don't think, a partisan issue. I don't think it's a geopartisan issue. I don't think it's a issue that will get shut down simply because it's being proposed by the city. Uh, and I'd like to see that idea explored by staff before we turn off the feasibility of introducing a bill on our own.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Coffin, you're next, and Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Coffin, Councilman Coffin. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the question I had was actually for Betsy. Betsy, is there anything that will, that will deter our ability if in fact this were the decision for, for no BDRs to be had today versus the 20th? Just to exhaust the next two, three weeks?
We, we could, we could do a couple of things. One, we can, um, we can take this conversation today and, um, and do some further exploration on some of the issues that Ted spent quite a bit of time talking about-
Right.
-earlier. Two, further flesh out what mechanisms are in place, who's doing what and why, as best we can tell. If there are particular bills, like the one that Councilman Beers is talking about regarding child performers on Fremont Street experience, um, that we feel we need to promulgate, um, then, you know, obviously, we could have a bill, you know, drafted ultimately that would address child performers on Fremont Street. Um, tho- those are the kinds of things that, that we could try and work out over the next couple of weeks. So really, the reason why we put this on today is so that we weren't having this discussion two weeks from now.
Yeah.
Uh, so that if there were issues out there that you all felt needed to have, you know, have our name on them versus a legislator's name on them-
You'd have time to work on it.
-that we got that direction today so we could build them into the agenda for the 20th.
Right.
Um, I, I didn't really hear that directly in the conversation today. And so, I'm, I mean, we're happy to do that. Um, if, if you wanna tell us today, hey, look, we really want you to look at a, a bill draft potentially on whatever it might be. We've talked about pedestrian safety, for instance, Councilman. Councilman Beers has brought up the child performer issue. Uh, Councilman Coffin has brought up the, the home rule issue, which we think we found a different vehicle for. We can explore those further over the next two weeks, and then we'll just put a specific item on about city of Las Vegas bill drafts next meeting and, um, and, and have a conversation again at that point, if that's what you prefer.
Because if, if I'm hearing Mayor correctly, Councilman Ross's emotion, we would then halt staff from being able to bring anything back on the 20th if in fact something were to occur between now and then?
Which was-
If I'm hearing it correct.
Well, and, uh, that's exactly what I did here, which is why I asked our city manager, let's assume we move into October and something has become very prominent that we need to have a bill draft. Can we still get that on? And, uh, her response was, yes, but you would have to find a friend in the legislature to carry the ball for you. So that was why I stated I was voting in the affirmative with Councilman Ross on his motion there.
Okay.
And so it did give us a window in the future.
Councilman, I think the other thing too is that if, if an issue came up, let's say something really out of the ordinary happened that all of a sudden we realized we didn't have authority to do, to address that issue, you would still, Councilman Beers is correct, you would still have these next two or three weeks to be able to direct through a formal action to have a bill draft drafted. Um, but that time clock stops at the end of this month anyway. We've only got one meeting left, um, in order to utilize that window that the legislature affords us. And if something happened in two weeks that, uh, promulgated that discussion, obviously we would put an agenda item on and get you guys to tell us, tell us a direction.
But when is the deadline?
The end of this month, we have to submit to the legislature.
That's not what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When is the deadline to have something placed on the August 20th agenda?
This week, really, as far as an item goes. So we can easily put an item on that has an additional, much more specific conversation about bill drafts for the city of Las Vegas, um, teed up for the 20th.
In which case, we are really proving ourselves very, you know, that we have been too slow to do this, if we are at this point, at discussion at this point.
Well, I, I don't, I, I'm not sure I necessarily agree with that, Mayor. This always happens this month, every two years.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're having this conversation because we're run up against that deadline. Um, we have interim reports all along about what's happening in the interim. Uh, we have the, the legislator briefings where ideas come up and issues are discussed.
But our bill drafts last, that last session, we're well in advance of this last minute.
Actually, we always bring this item at the second meeting in August, and I ask to have it expedited because this is unique, that we don't have a staff recommendation for bill drafts.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring it a little bit earlier to afford us an opportunity-
Okay.
-to have this conversation so that we could then make a determination if we miss something, or if something has come up like Councilman Barlow mentioned, that we might wanna reserve a bill draft for, a particular topic.
Thank you. I mean, that does clarify, because I think in the last legislative session, you'd been briefing us all along, these are the bills that we're talking about.
Well, and we had a very clear agenda. We were focusing heartily on-
Correct.
-the redevelopment agency, but that was because we had had four failed bills.
Right.
And so we'd been talking about it for nearly a decade.
Okay.
And so, yeah, it was just different.
Thank you.
Now, we were highly successful in the last session.
Yes, we were.
And so the agenda for this session was a little less clear.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay, there was a motion there, and Councilman Coffin, Councilwoman Tarkanian, if you have to cast their ballots, if you do so, and then please post that, and then we'll move- Mayor. Thank you, the motion carries. Appreciate it. And so, um, with your issues, if I might, that I think are really important, Mr. Olivas, um, the issues that have come forward and then listening to Councilman Beers about the Fremont Street, which is in legal hands, I think, with Brad Jerbick, that's very important. There's, there's so much to it, I don't know whether the legislature, in their considerations, if they're particular only to the city of Las Vegas, um, and only to us, have we, well, I know in redevelopment, yes, we have. So, um, it's just, to continue the conversation on those particular issues, be sure, please, please, that we do that. I thank you very much. And Bob, thank you. Mr. Strofsky and, uh, Leanne, again, thank you very, very much. We'll move on to agenda item 38. We'll move on to agenda item 38. This is a report by Mr. Perrigo, City of Las Vegas Chief Sustainability Officer on the city's sustainability initiatives. This is all wards. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Tom Perrigo, Chief Sustainability Officer and Deputy Director of Administrative Services. So I appreciate the opportunity to share with you all the things going on with the sustainability initiative. The accomplishments are many. The city has done a lot over the last 10 years. So we're going to break it up into four meetings. So today, we're going to go a little bit more into talking about waste and recycling. And we have Marco Velata from Admin Services to talk about that and, and Bob Coyle from Republic Services as well. And then in the coming meetings, we'll talk about energy and we'll talk about water and we'll talk about where we're headed with all this. So I want to start off with just a couple of comments.
Wait, Mayor, before he goes on. So, Mr. Perrigo, you're just going to talk trash to us today?
[laughing]
After that last, after that last batch of hot air?
So sustainability really started for the city back in 2005 when then-Mayor Oscar Goodman signed on to the US, US Congress of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement. That agreement committed the city with a subsequent resolution to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions seven percent below 1990 levels. I'm happy to report that today we're at about 1997 levels and we're continuing to decline. We'll be below 1990 within this next few years. Now, keep in mind, we've reduced our emissions to the same level as 1997. Since then, we've added 180,000 people to our population. We've doubled the number of fire stations, doubled the number of streetlights, doubled the number of community centers, and added over a million square feet of buildings to our inventory of city buildings. So that's really quite, quite an accomplishment. So just real quick on, you know, we, we have these stretch goals that we always talk about. And again, we'll come back at the end of this series of presentations and maybe more formalize some of those goals and, and talk about policy foundational for that. But we talk about zero energy, zero water, zero waste. So this chart kind of shows that idea of getting to zero energy where you can see how through conservation, we continue to reduce our consumption. We've already reduced our consumption over 20%. And through the additional renewable energy, we can increase the amount of our energy that comes from renewable resources so that over time, we can accomplish that idea of net zero, fixing our energy costs and really having a big impact on our greenhouse gas emissions. And so with water, we talk about zero water. How in the world can we do that as a desert community? We've already reduced our water consumption dramatically through conservation measures. And if you look at this chart, what it shows is that bottom, those, those bottom level there, that's groundwater. The city has rights to over 2,000 acre feet of groundwater annually, which is about 650,000 gallons a year. Okay? So we're using that in different areas throughout the city. The middle bar represents the buildings, the amount of water we use in buildings. Now, keep in mind, what's great about this community is we're like a basin. So everything we use in a building that goes down a drain is treated and returned to the river. So that's all recycled water. So it's really that top series of bars, which is irrigation on our parks and landscapes and landscape medians and so on, that's really got consumptive use. And as we continue to find ways to conserve converting our fields to artificial turf and so on, we're going to see that portion of our water consumption continue to go down. And so that we, there is a possibility that there could be a day in the future when we're actually using water from groundwater rights, which of course is regenerated and recycling the rest of our water, or using water that's reclaimed. So there is opportunity there. We'll talk more about that again in the, in the water segment. And then today, I'm going to turn it over to Marco in a second, but we're going to talk trash. We've made some really impressive gains in our, in our waste. We're now recycling at a rate greater than 55% when just three years ago, we were less than 20%. Marco will talk a little bit more about how we've gotten here and what it's meant in terms of cost savings. But when you look at that remaining 45%, that's going into the landfill, we will continue to drive recycling rates till we think we can get to 65, 70%. And as technology improves and there's people coming to us constantly about how to take that last 30%, it has energy content, right? So that we're constantly measuring and evaluating, is there value in that waste stream and can it be used, for example, for things to create energy, to create fuel, to create gas? And I believe everybody's working hard on this across the nation. There will be a day in the not-too-distant future where we will be at a zero waste solution for all of the waste stream of the city. So with that, I will turn it over to Marco Velata and he's going to talk a little bit more about how we got to where we are with our waste and recycling.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and members of council. For the record, Marco Velata, Office of Administrative Services. Building upon what Mr. Perrigo has, has discussed so far, this past fiscal year, City of Las Vegas has increased its, its recycling rate and diversion to about 54% at its cities' facilities, which has represented $323,000 savings, down from our, our peak of $821,000.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Marco, I want, thank you, Mayor. Marco, you might want to explain what diversion means and you want, and you might want to also explain, Mr. Perrigo used the term net zero, what that means, just for a lot of folks who don't understand what those terms mean.
Certainly. So diversion is our, is the city's moving municipal waste to the landfill or to recycling. And net zero, in the sense, is, is having consumption that is essentially meeting the, the actual, the actual usage.
Since I'm the one who uses the term, I mean, net zero really is saying that we're having a, a net zero impact on our resources in terms, in other words, what we consume is stuff that's naturally regenerated. We're not using it and then it's becoming part of the waste stream.
Councilman Barlow?
And I appreciate that. And the diversion also, in, to my recollection, is when you say you separate the waste and the recyclables, that's a part of that diversion, right? As far as on the assembly, is that where the diversion takes place? Or at the actual pickup where they're separated? The waste goes in one direction and the recyclables end up in a, in a different location?
That's right, Councilman. At all of our city facilities, we use single stream. So as a result of a, a lot of really amazing work being done, field operations personnel and every single city employee who makes a decision, does this go into a trash can or a recycle bin? When they put it in a recycle bin, it's being diverted from the waste stream. Then it goes out to Republic Services and Bob will talk a little bit about this. Out there, then they separate all the materials into different categories of useful materials that are then used, you know, go back into productive use.
Thank you. Please continue.
Certainly. So essentially, what, what this, this diversion rate has, has gotten for us is nationwide detention. The City of Las Vegas is now recognized as a nationwide leader in terms of its, its city operations and its, and its recycling efforts, most recently at the US Conference of Mayors. So operations and maintenance staff has, has really made a, an excellent effort in, in distributing bins at, at office, at our office space, including City Hall and Development Services Center. You can see examples of, of the bins in, in offices and in common areas throughout our city facilities. And just to illustrate even further, the, the, on the left, you have the, the compactor for recycling and on the right, you have the, the dumpster out back at, in the loading dock here at, at our building. And really, this illustrates our, our waste stream and how much we recycle at this building. And that's vastly different from the way things were at, at Old City Hall. Our operations and maintenance staff has also made recycling visible out in the community. And recently, you've noticed in front of the building at First Street and at Main Street, you have recycling bins that are alongside trash receptacles. So throughout downtown Las Vegas, you can see, you can see these bins. Essentially, what that means is the bins are available now to the public and it's making an impact and influencing their ability to make a decision to recycle bottles and cans and things like that. Staff has also been very creative in, in implementing recycling at our parks. And in this, in this picture, you can see that, that they've taken some of the old bins that we've had, painted them with the recycling only and put up some signage to, again, to, to provide a low cost and cost effective, cost-effective way to make recycling visible.
And if I could ask you a question there, I noticed on that last slide, the recycle only, no food, no glass is contradictory to the one two back, which is in City Hall, paper, plastic, cans and bottles. And so, you know, are you telling me, yes, bottles that are glass in the City Hall, but no out there in the public? Or when you say bottles, do you mean plastic bottles? In which case, I think, I mean, it's confusing to the public and I am one of those people who's confused. What do I put what, where?
I know both of these guys can probably answer this question, but because this is in a park, we don't allow glass in the parks. So they wouldn't put no glass. They wouldn't, they wouldn't expect glass to be there because we don't allow glass in the parks to begin with. So, does that make sense? So they're different, here you can have glass in our building.
Yes.
Because you might walk in with, you know, some fruit drink or something in a glass bottle. But in the parks, they're not going to have glass anyway, so we wouldn't be recycling.
So why is the sign saying no glass then?
Because you're not supposed to have any glass, so the...
That's on your big white sign.
Our parks mean it's people that go and pick that stuff up.
Okay.
See what I mean? We're, they would not be expecting glass because there is no glass allowed in the parks.
Oh, well, this is for the pickup people.
So we're saying, don't put, even if you brought glass in illegally, don't put it in here, because our people wouldn't be expecting it. When they go to dump it, it could hurt them, which is why we changed that law to begin with.
Thank you. You didn't help me, but it's okay. I got your explanation.
And, and just real quick, Mayor, that, you bring up an excellent point and, and the messaging and the labeling of this stuff is really a big challenge to make it as clear and easy as we can for people to recycle. And we meet every couple of months with park staff, with operations and maintenance staff, and the communications staff has really been helpful in helping us to constantly revise, review and see how we can message and label these things to make it clear. It's, it is a challenge.
It is. And I, you know, when I go to the parks, I usually see those bigger on the state signs that say no bottles, no glass or no something there. And that just was confusing to me as somebody who tries to do the right thing and that's all. So I get it. Thank you, yes?
Thank you. Just one more, because I, I have a question for you as well. In the, in the process, going back to the previous, and I'm just looking from an aesthetic standpoint now, as far as the, go, go back to the previous slide where, yes, right there. We have very nice-looking, what do we call them? Trash cans around the City of Las Vegas. And then here in one of our parks, we have a barrel with paint on it. I mean, and, and so we have a, a barrel with paint on it. So this isn't going to be the standard set in all of our parks, right, Tom?
Absolutely. The, the barrels have been in a lot of the sports fields parks, along the sports fields as a low-cost option for providing waste receptacles. That's being, we're transitioning away from those and looking at alternatives. That's part of our, our regular meetings, you know, the location of the trash can strategically rather than having barrels everywhere. And so that's all starting to change.
Okay. And in addition to that, excuse me, in addition to that, you showed previously wrapped canisters that basically have the opportunity to have sponsorship and other messaging. Are we looking, are we still looking at that, at that option in relation to communicating with our guests of the recreational facilities as well as our parks? That, they can receive those messages as far as where the recyclables are to be placed and where the trash is to be placed?
Yes, Councilman, we are. We're, we're constantly, again, meeting with communications and staff on the field. We're looking at those options and it, it starts to get into our active marketing work that we're doing, that Esther's working on. So yes, we're, we're looking at all of those things.
And in addition to that, you also, in my office, you spoke to me about a, a product that will be sunken underground. If you could speak more to that?
Yeah, they, Ray Montoya, Daphne and her crew have looked at bins, they've, I think, installed a few now in Lorenzi that looks like a normal bin at, at the top, but beneath, it's a much larger container. So what that does is it creates the opportunity to have fewer pickups and it's more of a, a permanent solution and allows for more material to go into that bin. But that's mostly for recycling and that's about as much as I know about it.
Okay. And what I've seen specifically at our regional parks and in particular Lorenzi, from a recyclable, from a recycling standpoint, I see a number of people going inside of our recycling canisters, taking the product out and carrying them off to their vehicles. So are we looking to recycle for the city's benefit to receive the dividends that could possibly come from the revenues from those recyclables? Or are we going to continue to allow those products to escape the park by way of the, those who are coming into the parks to dump our trash force? Or I should say, dump our recyclable, recycle, recycle, whatever you call it.
Yeah, that, that's an excellent question. And, and we have evaluated, there, there is value in, in aluminum, in plastic, in cardboard.
Right.
But there's not enough value for the city to invest in doing the separation ourselves. So it makes much more sense for us to put it into our recycle bins because that reduces our costs overall to, for our waste volume. That's how we got to that over $300,000 savings. And then, and then Republic takes and separates it and, and uses the materials that way. It's just too expensive for us to separate it ourselves.
What I'm getting at, as far as the protection of those recycled products.
Recyclables, yeah.
Right? So, so, I mean, right now, it's just wide open. Are we going to have a cap on them or, or what we have, for example, around City Hall, we have lids on them, but you could, you can still place them in there, but you can't necessarily reach in and grab anything. So I'm just trying to understand how you're going to roll that out inside of our parks for the protection of those recycled cans or plastics.
That's an excellent question and I'll make sure to bring it up at our next meeting. I, we haven't had, that hasn't been on our agenda yet. So they do talk about that out in the field. How do we, they're mostly concerned with keeping it clean, first and foremost, keeping things in place, you know, so they don't get tipped over and, and people go digging through there and they're stuffed everywhere.
That's what I was going to say. In, in our parks, people are digging through the trash, placing the trash around the canisters in order to get the cans as well as the plastics. And so I'm trying to avoid that by figuring out a way to have our guests to separate it by placing them in the, placing them in, in the appropriate canister without someone coming in and disturbing that and, and creating a bigger mess for the patrons inside the park. So if you can just basically make note of that and, and see how we can bring some formal resolve, that would be helpful too. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And again, to reiterate what Mr. Perrigo said, you know, messaging is important as well as public education of, that the City of Las Vegas is encouraging the public to recycle. And again, posters like these that are at our facilities shows that, that the city is committed to sustainability and especially sustainability in our parks and really our, our operations and maintenance staff and communications is a part, and the committee that's working on this has really been dedicated to creating things like that. That, I will turn things over to Mr. Coyle with Republic Services.
What's really great about all of this is that while the city is, is really taking the leadership role in our community and also being recognized nationally, it's not just our city, but as a community, we're doing great things. So with each of these presentations, I'm going to bring in somebody from the community, one of our partners, and Republic Services has been a fantastic partner of ours, really helping us to get to where we are today. And again, this one that's on, on right now is just such a great illustration of that where that little dumpster handles all the trash coming out of this huge building. That means we're putting a lot into recycling and, and Bob Coyle has been a, a big help to us.
Good morning, Mayor and members of City Council. Bob Coyle, Republic Services, local neighborhood garbage man. And I went back to Marco's picture and Tom's picture to draw a bigger picture of what diversion is. Councilman Ross asked us about it. At the old City Hall, that big roll-off container that you see was full of garbage and went to the landfill. At new City Hall, the only trash is in that small container that gets picked up. All, all of the, the material in the teal container is what gets diverted and goes to the recycling facility. And it's a lot cheaper for the city to pay for that. It's about half the cost to take that to the recycling center than it would be if it was trash.
Can I add to that, Mayor?
Please.
Mr. Coyle?
Mr. Coyle? Likewise, in someone's home, it's, it's that way. The recycling, and you'll probably cover this in your presentation, but as single-stream recycling has caught on with a lot of those, especially the pilot programs in Centennial Hills, I am asked, and I'll probably repeat myself when you're done with your presentation, I'm asked all the time, when is that, when are we gonna be able to participate in that? Because those in the, in that program, those pilot programs in the city of Las Vegas have discovered that their recyclables are this big, and their actual trash going to the landfill is this big. And they're amazed by that, because there was tremendous pushback, if you remember, many years ago, we started having these conversations, because people couldn't understand or wrap their hands around it. But it's just, so you look at that big, big bin, and then you look at the smaller bin, I'm glad you brought that up, because it's just like that in someone's home, as well. So I just want to point that out. Thank you, Mayor.
No, you're correct. And being a paradigm shifter, I'm used to walking around with arrows in my back, over the last five years. But what Tom, what Tom's asked me to do was just give you a brief current state of the single-stream recycling program. Here's the number of homes that are on the program in each city. The city of North Las Vegas and the city of Henderson are completely converted to the trash and recycling carts. Incorporated Clark County, the county commission approved the implementation of the program on November 13th, 2013. And in the city of Las Vegas, there's about 10% of your 160,000 homes are on the program currently. This is our construction setup. We, our old recycling facility, which was built in 1991, is at 105% of capacity. We work two shifts, six days a week, and we need to build a new state-of-the-art recycling center. It will be in North Las Vegas, on the same parcel of land where our existing recycling facility is. We submitted building permits last week to the city of North Las Vegas. We expect to be under construction by October. We think the building will be almost complete by March, so that we can begin to install the new processing equipment, which will take us from approximately 20 tons an hour to 70 tons of, an hour, to be able to move forward with the program. We expect the, the new facility to be up and running by September of next year. Construction cost on the new facility is $30 million. And we're going to be asking you shortly to, you know, consider implementing the single-stream recycling program. If we do that, in the city of Las Vegas, we will be investing 37, a little over $37 million in infrastructure in your community, with two carts at every home. And then, even better, that will enable us to convert the remaining part of our fleet. We already have 80 compressed natural gas trucks on the street. That would enable us to convert the entire fleet to natural gas. That would give us approximately 350 to 400 trucks within five years that would be running on clean burning domestically-produced natural gas. We don't have to worry about what's going on in the Middle East. We generate a tremendous amount of that. Each natural gas truck that replaces a diesel truck is the equivalent of taking 325 cars of pollution off the street.
Wow.
So if we convert a diesel to a natural gas truck, that's the equivalent of taking 325 regular cars off the truck. Just to kind of show you the performance of the program, back in 2005, with absolutely no pilot program in place for single-stream, we reported to the Southern Nevada Health District just under 50,000 tons of recycling that we were able to sell. I can't believe this.
Love.
I apologize. Last year, we reported that we sold and moved 82,800 tons of recyclable material, which is a 66% increase. With full implementation valley-wide of residential single-stream program, we would estimate that we would divert an additional 190 to 200,000, which would be a 142% increase from the 82,000 we have now.
By what year do you hope that to be?
By full implementation, should be 2020 to 2021. So we anticipate we'll be able to implement the program for 70,000 to 80,000 homes per year, as, as soon as you give us the approval to move forward, and we'll be doing the county and the city of Las Vegas, you know, coordinated.
Wow.
And with that, if you have any questions about the program, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. What a great, great report. This is really exciting, Tom. I know you're just bursting at the seams, and we did get that national award. So it's just, it's really an exciting leadership time. So, I don't know, comments, questions? Councilman Ross?
Certainly, Mayor, thank you. And councilmembers, if you'd indulge me for a moment, I think that as we, the city of Las Vegas, Ms. Fretwell, I need you to kind of pay attention to this as well, we as the city of Las Vegas, continue to be leaders in so many areas. This is another one of those areas. Mr. Perico, you and your team have done a phenomenal job of educating us, and I can still hear Oscar Goodman saying, what do you do for the city? But you've educated us, it's, it's not been easy, I've had my own issues, I know Councilman Barlow mentioned Lorenzi Park, my own issues out at Floydland Park at Tulley Springs, with, you know, changing people's way of doing things, and it's, it's that habit of doing one thing and having to train yourself to do another thing. But it's been very effective. So I must say that, number one, I'm proud that the city leads in this area, and we need to continue to do so. Because I am constantly inundated with my constituents, asking me, when, when, when? Mayor and councilmembers, Ms. Fretwell, I would like to, with the mayor's permission, direct staff to get an agenda item on an upcoming agenda, to move towards single-stream recycling in the city of Las Vegas. Republic Services' financial commitment to the capital that's necessary to be structured, that will take time, Mr. Coyle, and I think we all understand that, but we can move beyond this. Let's stop talking about, I love the reports, and I don't want those to stop, certainly, but let's get something agenda'd that shows us moving in that direction. North Las Vegas has done it, Clark County's done it, we understand it's gonna take you time to gear up, man up, and equipment up to do the entire valley. But with that in mind, the gates will be open, you won't need to come back to this council. So I'm recommending that we just get something on the agenda, get it voted on, and move on, and continue to set an example, and be good leaders in, in the environment.
Mayor? Yes, and Councilman Barlow?
Thank you so very much. I don't necessarily agree with, I'm sorry, I don't necessarily disagree with Councilman Ross, but how we systematically make that transition is where my concern lie, because I know that Ward Five was selected as the pilot for the, for your single-stream pilot program, which I would like to know if, in fact, you all have followed up with those residents, as it relates to their feeling today, as it relates to single-stream. Maybe they have no other choice, but has there been a messaging to say, hey, we understand that this was brought upon you, not necessarily abruptly, but I know that there was a lot of consternation in relation to having to go from two days, from what they were accustomed to, to now one day? And it has been in the process, I want to say maybe three years? Probably close to three years now, Mr. Coyle?
Yes. Councilman Barlow raises a good point. I did not bring it with me today, but the city had the Cannon Survey Center at UNLV do a customer satisfaction survey, I believe, back in 2009, or maybe the early part of 2010. So we do have the results of that. We also did a mail-out, very short, four-question postcard survey about a year after the Cannon Survey Center, and we have the results from that, too, that I could certainly bring if, when the city brings, comes back with the agenda item, I'd be more than happy to make sure we have the customer satisfaction surveys. I don't know if this would help, but this is a map of the areas that the program is That's west Las Vegas in the center. Up to the left, upper-left, you have the Providence and Centennial Hills area. The green on the left-hand side of the picture is Desert Shores. There's also a couple of small specks of green just west of that, and those are about 200 homes of sub HOAs in Sun City Summerland that really wanted to be on the program over the last year or so. And then, down at the bottom center, you see the blue areas on the right-hand side, that's Councilman Coffin's neighborhood at John S. Park and South Ridge, which is right next door. And on the left side of Interstate 15, those two blue areas are two neighborhood associations in Councilmember Tarkanian's district, one being McNeil, and, who are extremely happy with the program. But certainly, when we come back, we will brief you on the customer satisfaction survey from UNLV, and we reimburse the city for that, but the city managed the process, managed the questions that they asked, and received the report. So we'll bring back the customer satisfaction.
And the reason I bring that forward is because what I don't want to do is basically arbitrarily just give a green light to go and change the entire city, when in fact, the pilot program has not, in my opinion, you know, been adequately flushed out, because we, at least myself, I have not received any of those reports as to whether or not my constituents are actually enjoying this new product model. And so I would like to at least make sure that all of the research has been conducted accordingly, and that it's something that we can then transition into the other neighborhoods, basically building off of some of the issues that we learned from what took place when, in fact, they went from two string, to two pickup a day until, to one pickup a day. And so for that, there's things that we, or your company, have learned from that, that you can possibly head off as you transition throughout the city of Las Vegas, if in fact, that's the direction we're gonna go. So I'm not one that's open to basically say, go out, take off running. I'm not saying that, that's not my position. And so, I'm saying, let's continue to methodically transition, making sure that we massage our constituents, if in fact, that's the direction we're gonna go in, to make sure that we don't do anything that will cause any undue justice to what they've been accustomed to for many, many years now.
I certainly understand your point, councilmember, and we will deal with it, and try and brief you well before we come back to council with an agenda item.
Mayor Prokhem had a comment, then Councilman Coffin, and could we trouble you for a copy of the map? It's not in the report. Could we each have a copy of that map?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll have one delivered.
Yes, Councilman.
Thanks, Bob, that's a good report. You know, when, when people in my ward first hear about the single-stream recycling garbage one week, and recycling next week, they, right off the bat, they don't like it. You know, they, they think the garbage is gonna stink, and it's not enough, and I get a lot of comments like that. But what's interesting is, the people in the pilot projects, like Desert Shores, I haven't heard one peep out of them complaining. And the Sun City Summerland is, is one of those that are, they're, you know, they're older people, so they're not sure how it's gonna work, but we, we did have one community in Sun City ask for it, and they like it. So I'd like to eventually, you know, we're gonna have to vote on this eventually, but I, I think, I think what's important is that we have a, kind of an educational process here, leading up to us voting. I'd like to hear, like Councilman Barlow said, I'd really like to hear what, the feedback in Henderson, what North Las Vegas, the residents there, the feedback from them, the sections in Clark County, the feedback from the folks that already have it, and it's, I'm pretty confident it's gonna consistently be that they like it. That's what I'm hearing. But I think we need to get that out, I think we need to talk more about what exactly this looks like, and, you know, have some community meetings out in Las Vegas before we actually pull the trigger on this. We are the last ones to do it, but it's, it's really, I really want the, the folks in Las Vegas to understand what is it that's gonna happen, before we actually say yes. So I don't want to pull the trigger too quick, I really want people to understand what we're gonna be doing here. But the, like I said, I hear, I hear good stuff. Once people see it, once people understand how it works, once they get the moving parts, and they're actually moving stuff around, I don't hear anybody complaining about it, so.
I would tell you, I'm living next door to McNeil, and going to block parties, they not only love it, but they love the uniformity of what their neighborhood looks like, with the same color bins out there, and on a cycle that they've all adapted to. So to get the feedback from where you have it fully implemented is really helpful, with comments, a comment card that they can give back, so as you proceed forward, and the council should proceed forward, that we have this. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. It really works well in my ward. We've had two projects going, I guess you could call them pilot projects, but we're adapted. I received no complaints over the last two and a half years. We are close to finishing our second summer, which is always the acid test with this kind of thing, and there's no complaints of aroma, you don't smell them, I mean, these, I suppose if a lid was bent or misshapen, and it could allow some aromas to escape, but really, they don't. And so, you know, I, I think that it works, and it's, hey, it's easier to do. I mean, it's much easier, these barrels can be any one of three different sizes, depending on the amount of trash you generate or recycle you generate. And, well, we've been using it for almost two years now, in our neighborhood. So I was a guinea pig, and I, you know, if I'm gonna force it on anybody else, I'm gonna say, well, I gotta try it first. And my neighbors are, are not unhappy, thank God. So I'm happy. And I think it's really a good thing, it's, it's, it's working. There's been some dispute about the cost, because over the course of a year, there's a couple less pickups, or so, but in a way, we don't have to buy our own trash cans anymore, we don't have to pay for them. You don't have to haul them out twice a week, once a week's enough. And the only, only difficulty I know about is that sometimes we forget what day is the heavy pickup, because that's every other week. And that's, that's something to consider. I don't know what the reminder system needs to be, but that, that's one thing that some people still get confused about, but other than that, it's great.
Thank you, it's a great report. Anyone else comment? Thank you. Thank you. We're just really looking forward to the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trash Talk was successful. Okay. We are now, that was a report only, so no motion was required. Items 39 and 40 have been obeyed to the 20th, is that correct? Okay, so then we move on to boards and commissions. For possible action, Audit Oversight Committee, Bernetta Stebarts, term expiration August 1st, 2014. Craig Rosevear, term expiration September 15th, 2014. Procedure for this committee requires appointment, reappointment by the mayor with ratification by the city council. For Bernetta Stebarts's position, my motion is to appoint Annette Caro to fill her position and make that motion. And if anybody would like to see her, her veto, I mean, certainly we'd make it, she's very well qualified.
Do you want to make the reappointment from Craig Rosevear at the same time?
Oh, absolutely. Okay. So that would be agenda items, I would do them both together on the same motion. Yes, and I would, Craig Rosevear has been participating, and from my understanding, from Rad Snelling, that has been very helpful, and so he would like to continue serving and have a new appointment, and so that would be my motion then, to appoint Annette Caro into Bernetta Stebarts' position, and reappoint Craig Rosevear. That's my motion, thank you for catching that. Please vote, and then please post. My motion carries, thank you very much. Agenda item 42 for possible action, Traffic and Parking Commission. Lillian McMorris, term expiration 8/18/2014, and Robert Hoben, who is deceased, his term would expire in December 20th of 2015. The procedure for this board requires appointment by the mayor with confirmation by the city council. The options are, reappoint Ms. McMorris, or appoint a new Ward Five representative to fill the seat, and appoint a new Ward Three resident to this seat. Councilman Barlow, I understand you have a recommendation for Ms. McMorris.
Yes, to my understanding, she wanted to be reappointed. So if that's the case, then I'm going to move that we reappoint Ms. Lillian McMorris. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Coffin, for the Ward Three seat, your wish, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to recommend to the council that we appoint Kathleen Carr DeEsposito. She is- She is a great asset to Ward 3. She's been active, in fact, she's been our Citizen of the Month here for the council, and she's done a great job. She is the immediate past president of the Huntridge Neighborhood Association, so she's proved her activity, proved her ability to be involved in civic events. So Kathleen Carr would be my nominee for that spot, to replace a great guy, Bob Hoban, who served for many years, and was wheelchair, if those of you remember, and he had a great attendance record. And so we will sadly miss Bob. I'm just sorry that he's gone, but we have to move on. Thank you.
Thank you. So that would be the motion, to reappoint Ms. McMorris, and now Ms. Carr into Robert Hoban's vacancy. And that's my motion. Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item 43, for possible action, Traffic Signal Improvement Advisory Committee. That is the same committee they were jointly, actually, appointed, Robert Hoban, who is deceased. So Councilman Coffin, what would be your recommendation here, please?
Your Honor, sometimes this appointment goes to, it's the same person that's been appointed to traffic and parking position, but I want to try to spread out the work here and find more volunteer work for people in our community. So for this position, I'm going to nominate a longtime Las Vegas resident, Max Carter, business manager up at Local 357 of the IBEW, who I'm sure Councilman Ross knows. He's a good guy with a lot of strong opinions, and I know that he will bring a lot of new things to the Traffic Signal Committee. So I, my appointment would be to nominate Max Carter.
Thank you very much. So there's a motion to appoint Max Carter to the Traffic Signal Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Please vote, and please post.
And Mayor, just to disclose, before the votes read, I am a member of IBEW 357, and I used to be the assistant business manager there, so, but have no problem.
Are you abstaining therefore?
No, he's okay to vote.
Disposing. Okay. I love that. Thank you very much. Did we post? We did. It carried. Okay. Agenda item 44 for possible action, very important Historic Preservation Commission. Dorothy Wright, term expiration March 24, 2017, has had to resign. So I understand that we have a recommendation from Flynn Fagg to fill this seat on the boards. My motion will be to take that recommendation. Did you want to speak to it? I think it would be very nice if you would. Or are you okay? I think it would be nice. The recommendation for Mr. Fagg is for Sandra Cosgrove, and maybe do something on her background, but thank you and good afternoon.
Madam Mayor, Flynn Fagg, Department of Planning. Thank you very much. Ms. Cosgrove is a professor at CSN and teaches Nevada history there. This particular seat that Ms. Wright occupied is someone who has to be knowledgeable in Nevada history, and so we felt Ms. Cosgrove was the appropriate person to replace Ms. Wright. So we would ask for your support in that nomination.
Wonderful. So she teaches Nevada history?
Yes, she does.
Wonderful. She'll hold our feet to the fire. Therefore, my motion will be to appoint Sandra Cosgrove to this position. Would you please vote? And then please post. And that motion carries. Thank you. I'm sure she will be notified, as will the others, by your wonderful office. Thank you. Okay. So now we will move on to recommending committee. Bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill 2014-44. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Mayor, thank you so very much. Yes, I would.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Your Honor. Bill number 2014-44, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly describe the line of annex, to make it happen to some of the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and provide for other related matters.
And I would like to move.
Thank you very much.
I would like to move for approval of this item subject to all conditions.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion to approve, subject to all conditions. Please vote. That motion carries. Agenda item 46, Bill number 2014-45. Councilman Barlow, would you like this bill read also, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2014-45, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly describe the line of annex, to make it happen to some of the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. This motion, please vote. And please post. That motion carries. And agenda item 47, Bill number 2014-46, First Amendment. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2014-46, First Amendment, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to update the zoning treatment of animal keeping and crop transportation, crop production uses, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much.
I would like to move for approval, subject to all conditions.
First Amendment. Yep.
First Amendment.
Thank you. This motion, please vote. That motion carries as well. Now, items 48 and 49, bills 2014-39 and 2014-47 will be heard at a later meeting. We'll move on to new bills. Agenda item 50. Agenda items 50 through 55, bills 2014-49 through 2014-54 will be heard at the recommending committee on Monday, August 18. City Attorney, please read our bills.
On behalf of Your Honor, Bill number 2014-49, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly describe the line of annex, to make it happen to some of the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and provide for other related matters. Bill 2014-50, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, to particularly describe the line of annex, to make it happen to some of the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and provide for other related matters. Bill 2014-51, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to update provisions regarding the Regional Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, consistent with corresponding updates undertaken by other Southern Nevada local governments, and provide for other related matters. Bill 2014-52, in order to amend the city's nuisance regulations to include unruly gatherings on residential properties of public nuisance, define the term unruly gathering for that purpose, and provide for other related matters. Bill 2014-53, in order to establish licensing regulations for mobile car wash, auto detail businesses, and provide for other related matters. And finally, Bill number 2014-54, in order to generally prohibit the washing of vehicles upon public streets, and rights away, and provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. These new bills, 2014-49 through 2014-54, are signed to Councilmembers Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin, and will be heard at that meeting. Thank you very much. And we will now move on to... 55? Correct? Well, this says through 55. You're right. They're just out of... Hmm. Did you read that one? Mr. Gerbit, did we read number 55? I don't think somehow we did.
Good catch. I thought I pulled it out of the book.
I'm not sure. You did read that?
I'm sorry, I don't have 55 in my book.
You don't have a 55? This bill...
No, we read it.
Items 50 through 55 have been done?
Right. We read item 55. It's title 2014-54, and so I thought you were looking for 2014-54. We did read item 55.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Your Honor, assuming you were about... I'm Greg Borghel, 300 South Forest Street. Assuming you were about to go on to 56, 57, and 58, I'm Assistant Attorney Chris Kemfer in those matters, and he is on his way. So perhaps we could trail those?
Trail those? Okay.
Until the call of the chair, perhaps? It shouldn't be long. He is in his call, on the way.
Okay. Well, since, but we do have agenda item 59. So let's take agenda item 59 at this point, and since Mr. Ross has been waiting so long, we're going to let him participate here. This is agenda item 59, ROC 54826. This is a public hearing. Applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. Possible action on a request for review of condition of an approved variance, VAR 44710, to delete condition 1, which states, "The applicant shall submit the 25 space parking lease to the city's attorney's office. Approval is to form, and in acceptable duration to ensure adequate parking at 400 South 7th." This is in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends approval. It is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant here? And would you state your name, please? Or a representative?
There, actually, we probably should hear from the, from staff as well. We should hear from staff as well.
And we will hear from staff as well. Okay.
Good afternoon. Tom Letizia, representing Robert Eglet, 9332 Queen Charlotte.
Thank you very much. Staff had recommended approval. Did you have conditions, or...
Madam Mayor, we did not have conditions placed upon this review of condition. One of the things that we need to point out is that there was a variance that was approved from parking requirements. This condition was placed on that variance. Basically, it's a duplicative. If you grant a variance from parking requirements, you don't need to also require them to lease parking spaces. And so that's the reason why we have recommended approval, because again, it does duplicate the variance that was granted.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Ross.
Go ahead.
Mr. Letizia has spoken. He represents the ownership there.
Yes, okay.
Please.
My name is Daniel Ross. I live at 46 East Victory Road in Henderson. I own the property at 424 South 7th Street, which is the parking lot that would be affected by your granting the relief from, from the condition of the variance. So if you, if you grant this relief, then EVAPS, which is the, the company, the applicant company, would no longer have any reason to need to use the parking lot that is leased to them. And the obvious thing for them to do under those circumstances would be to see, despite, despite the lease agreement, there's a term in the lease agreement that if they default on payment of the rent, then after a few days' delay, then I have the option of, of canceling the lease. And the obvious thing for them to do would be to default, and it would force me to cancel the lease. And that would be the end of the, end of the rent agreement. Now, the issue that I want to bring to your attention is that that lease was designed with the intention of running a very long time, a minimum of 10 years. There's an automatic, there's an automatic renewal provision in the lease, so that every year, that 10 years gets extended one year further, unless either party does, says that they want to terminate the lease. So in many respects, it's, it's, it's a lease that would just run on and on and on. And another provision of the lease is that I, as owner of the property, am required to cooperate with the, the efforts that they make to make the construction of their building, which is using the parking lot, viable. And therefore, in conformity with that, I granted easements to Nevada Power Company and to the Water District to use a 10-foot strip at the back of the property to build power facilities and water facilities that really serve only the function of the building that EVAPS owns. And I, I did that partly because I was required to, and partly because the expectation was that this, this lease would run for a long duration. If EVAPS takes the logical step of defaulting on payment and the lease ends, then I am stuck with their utility facilities on my parking lot, which will prevent me from using that part of, part of the parking lot for some other reason. And, and the lease will be terminated, and I'll be getting no income from it. And, and so what I'm requesting from you is that you place a condition on granting this relief, that they remove, or they do something to free up the space on my lot, that I granted them, you know, a good, good faith.
If I might interrupt you, did, did you not have an attorney draw up the papers on this and have conditions addressed, should something like this happen? Did you not have an attorney draw up?
No, no, no. At least, not an attorney representing me.
So you have no legal documentation?
Pardon?
You have no legal documentation that in the event something like this might occur, that there's no process for you? There was no legal documentation that what if I reserve the right to have you remove the power and the water? Correct? You don't have a legal document with a lawyer?
No, no, I don't have that.
Okay. Well, I was just assured by Councilman Coffin that he is aware of the situation. Always get a lawyer.
May I continue with one more, one more point on this, please?
Yes, if you would.
Between the time when the, the lease agreement was signed, and the time when they actually did the construction, to put the, the power facility and the water facility on my property, 16 months elapsed. And I have not been party, I, I have not, I have not had an opportunity to see the, the issue that, that's before you, the, the reason why you are granting this relief. But my understanding is that there's been no last-minute change, that that information was available all along. And during this 16-month period between when they signed the agreement with me and they actually did the construction, they had the opportunity to ask for this relief before putting me in the condition where I have to, where I, where I have to grant the easement. So during that 16-month period, this whole, the whole issue of, of putting their utilities on my property could have been resolved without them needing to, without them having any reason to do it, had they just paid attention to what they were doing and, and asked for it in a timely manner.
Okay. The main thing is, your doc, your legal documentation does not work in your behalf, because you don't have it, didn't have it in writing, that there was an agreement, and if in fact, there were a default, they would have to take the power and water and everything off your property. So I do understand that Councilman Coffin is very aware of, of the issue, so I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, thank you for coming today to exercise your rights. I read all three emails.
Yes.
They did get diverted over to us eventually, although if you want to write me directly, I have a direct email and a direct phone number, so that you can get to us. I think, I understand this, and it's complicated. It looks to me like, because you didn't have legal counsel, nobody looked at an exit strategy for, after the building was built, and, you know, what were they going to do? And obviously, you, against that great big building full of lawyers, means you probably ought to get yourself a lawyer, unless you could do this through arbitration. You had an expectation that they were going to use your parking lot for a long time. And, but, you know, in a way, you never know, do you? You can't ever tell. And I don't think it was our responsibility to check, to see what your intentions were or their intentions were in their business agreement with you. And that's why I think you saw, or you asked, you posed questions about, why did the planning commission and why did the council approve this thing that's already built? Did we ask questions? Did we ask this? You had an obligation... You had an obligation to show up and pose the questions at the earliest stages to see if something could have been arbitrated at that point, maybe at some level, including us, but it didn't happen. And now you've got a built building and you've got utilities installed. Now, I don't know what kind of agreement you have. Even a handshake agreement can be enforced if it's really true, but I don't know. I do know this, you've got power and water now in your property that's being used on an easement for the adjacent. Could you also use that electrical power and water on your property?
No.
How do you know that?
Well, not that. I mean, it...
It's on your property, so the only time you have any leverage is if you want to start using it. You see, now you get, you want to build a building on that lot someday. It's a prime lot.
It's a large building and there's an electrical distribution box there which goes to their
I understand. We all understand that.
It seems very unlikely that, I don't know what the contents of that box are, but my guess is that if they put a big box like that on it, it's because the building needs that.
Well, you granted a long-term easement, which we will not interfere with. It is not our business to get involved in a business dispute between neighbors.
Councilman, if I might interject here, I think Mr. Scott would be happy to talk with him.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Scott, yeah, because I was going to ask his advice to make sure I didn't trespass into an area that I shouldn't be, but I think I get the justice because I'm a layman. Go ahead and let Mr. Scott answer.
Well...
Councilman, I was going to indicate...
If you would, Mr. Ross, hold on one second for Mr. Scott.
That I spoke to Mr. Ross yesterday at length with regard to this matter, and I indicated to him at that time that this is a private matter between he and Mr. Eglet and that group, that the city really didn't have any purview over any kind of, we're not in privy of contract with either party, and there's really nothing that we can do with regard to that lease agreement. There's an arbitration clause within the agreement itself that he's probably able to activate. He has other options, but he needs to consult an attorney with regard to that. And the only reason this is being done today is because of the fact that when you granted the variance, there's no longer a need to have a parking agreement. They're both, it's almost conflicting. So if you have the variance, you don't need the parking agreement. That's why it's being taken off today.
I'd like to address, Mr. Scott said.
It's between you and him or between you and them that the issue rests, is what he is reiterating. So the fact, whatever your agreements were in writing, it's not for this council to arbitrate on this. It's already in that original documentation that was all taken care of. So your issue, it's a private matter, is what Mr. Scott is saying, period. So you need to go back and have your meeting, and you might talk with Mr. Letitia here to see if a meeting can be arranged where you can discuss it with them. It is not within the purview of this council to deal on this matter at this point.
May I speak on that issue, please?
Well, I don't think at this point, there's no point because we cannot vote on this particular issue.
This is not a court of law. This is a political body.
Correct.
And...
And that's why.
And it is commonplace for the city council, when someone asks for a variance or for a permit, to require other amenities be provided before the variance or the permit is granted. And in this case, I would like you to consider as an amenity that he does justice by me and that as a political act, that this council has the power, if you choose to use it, to have him do justice by me.
Your Honor, can I reclaim this?
Thank you, Councilman. Yes.
I'm sorry, Daniel, but I'm going to move for the approval. And I do this, I have to do it reluctantly because you're making a case about things I know nothing, but judges do. And we've been advised by legal counsel that we have no standing to help settle this between you guys. I'd be happy to visit with you all later, and I don't really know Mr. Eglet, but I would be happy to facilitate discussions because I want your property to be developed. You know, it's a good piece of property right downtown. So I want to make sure that we've built this building here and, you know, you're going to get something out of it somehow, but only through arbitration or through legal action. And I think that it's important for you to remember that. You've had your rights observed. We have listened to this, but we have found out we have no power to help you as an individual. All we have the power to is approve or disapprove this thing, and we would be saying to somebody, lease property you don't need by deferring this. You know, that would be kind of against what we normally do.
No, I'm not trying to...
We had to force people. So I'm now going to move, Your Honor, for approval of item fifty-nine.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Excuse me, before we post that, it was a public hearing, and I didn't know if there was anyone else that wished to speak on this matter before I close the public hearing. Okay, hearing none, then close the public hearing. The vote's there. We are waiting still for, oh, okay. Would you please post then? And that motion carries. I would highly recommend...
In my email, I said I'd bring some supporting documentation. I would like to just submit it to whoever takes this stuff.
City Clerk. City Clerk, and she will make sure that Councilman Coffin gets it as well. He is offered to go with you, and perhaps Mr. Letitia can respond with Mr. Coffin to arrange some dialogue.
I'll be happy to accommodate that meeting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks. Okay, we are now, we see we are in full support here of agenda items. Goodness gracious, that we, where are we? Fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight. Fifty-six is MOD five-three-seven-oh-one, a request for major modification of Queensridge Towers Development Standards dated May twentieth, two thousand and four, to amend development standards regarding land use, building setbacks, and step backs, building height and parking. Agenda item fifty-seven, V A R five-oh-two, a request for a variance to allow a five-hundred-and-eighty-two-foot building setback where the residential adjacency standards require an eight-hundred-and-ten-foot setback for proposed twenty-two-story residential tower. And S fifty-eight being S D R five-three-five-oh-three, a request for a major amendment of an approved site development plan review. S D R four-two-zero-six, a proposed twenty-two-story, three-hundred-and-ten-foot-tall, one-hundred-and-sixty-six-unit multifamily building and single-story, thirty-three-foot-tall, seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot office building. The applicant owner is Queensridge Towers LLC on the south side of Alta, west of Rampart Boulevard, and a portion of the parcel at nine-one-nine-nine Alta Drive. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval on all three items. These items are in Ward Two with Councilman Beers and are public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Your Honor. Chris Kemfer and Greg Borgel here on behalf of the applicant, in the audience as well as Terry Murphy. We thank you very much, and I especially want to thank you for the consideration of trailing this item till I could be here. I'd like to tell you I was doing something very important, which I was at the county, and I know the former mayor used to tell me that was never important enough to be late for a meeting at the city council, so I thank you.
I would echo that.
But anyway, thank you very much for that accommodation. I appreciate it. We are going to take a little bit of time. At the Planning Commission, there were more people in the audience, but I still think it's important to kind of give a history of this so the record is crystal clear because in order to understand how we're here now, you have to understand how we got here. The original plan, and Mr. Borgel will go through these on the overhead, the original plan for the Queensridge Tower showed four towers. These four towers were approved by the council, and as you know, two towers were built and two were not. Mr. Borgel, point, those are the built, and the two that were not built but planned and approved by the council are there. It was subsequently determined by the developer that the building of the two towers would not be practical from either an economic or from a practical standpoint. So one tower is what is planned. This one tower would be somewhat higher and somewhat longer than either of the two towers originally proposed. However, it's very important that the amount of units would stay exactly the same. That's important because the impacts that you have if you, you know, were to increase density would obviously increase the impacts on traffic, noise, other schools, other considerations. So it's important to remember the units stayed exactly the same. Because of that, the impact on schools, traffic, other land use considerations all stayed the same as well. In fact, our engineer has met with the city, and we have been told that the city acknowledges that there is no difference in impact from what was previously approved under the site plan before and under the site plan that's proposed today. Now, the new third tower was originally proposed, as Mr. Borgel is showing it. That was the location that was preferred by the developer. Now, I'd like you, on the next exhibit, you can see the relationship between the first proposed tower and what was previously approved. In red was what was previously approved. This is the plan again...
Excuse me, those two in pink were already approved by council?
Already approved by the council. Could be built tomorrow.
Okay.
All right? Well, assuming you could build something in a day, it could be built tomorrow, but we could, it's, everything's approved. The plan we wanted is, as Mr. Borgel points out, is there, all right? However, the location of that tower caused considerable consternation for the people who are located in that tower right there, especially those on the end cap. They didn't, they felt that that location of that would block their views. The previous location would be something that would, you know, they could be supportive of simply because it was what was previously approved. Now, because of that, the developer literally went back to the drawing board at considerable cost. And as Mr. Borgel will show, it's hard to see on the overhead, but as Mr. Borgel will show, that is where the new tower, the present tower we're proposing is located. And it's, Mr. Borgel will show you the next shot, which shows you how that corresponds to where the previous tower was approved. Now again, I've indicated it's slightly longer, as Mr. Borgel points out, it's slightly taller, but it's essentially in the same location. And candidly, we thought we were done. We were told in our meetings with neighbors, if you put it back to where the original tower was approved, we'd be okay. That wasn't a universal thought, but we do have letters, and I would like to read those. I think, Mr. Borgel...
Could I ask you a question? The letters are objections. Were they original owners?
I'm not sure.
That obviously, that knew if they were original owners, they knew that these other projects were planned. And, but if they were, you know, let the buyer beware, if the second owner wasn't told or didn't do the research, that there was a possibility that this...
These are documents that are passed on, as you know, or should be passed on from the owner.
Right.
Some are recorded. And the bottom line is, we've not had anybody tell us privately, and no one has said publicly, they had no idea that there were restrictions in place. But when we finished with this redesign, we did receive comments from several homeowners thanking us. There's a letter that I introduced at the time of the Planning Commission from Alan Sklar, Linda and Alan Sklar, that I think it's important to read. "When the new development was first proposed during 2013, building size, scope, and placement presented significant concerns to us and other condominium owners relative to privacy and certain other matters. As a consequence, the owner developer conducted meetings with all and/or groups of owners. I anticipated that these meetings were largely for show. To our surprise and appreciation, as I now understand the new plans for the new development that have been presented for approval at your upcoming meeting, the most important concerns that Linda and I had have been addressed. I am aware that a number of neighbors have expressed continuing concerns over the proposed new development, even as currently modified. For our part, though, we understand that ultimately, property owners must be permitted to develop in a fair and reasonable manner and believe that the owner developer has done so, and moreover, that it should be praised for its willingness to materially modify its plans in order to address the concerns of existing condominium owners at this project." We have since received other letters that I know have gone to the councilmen from, we have a letter here from Alan Diamond M.D. that says, "When I originally purchased my home at Queensridge, at the Queensridge Place, I was advised that there were plans for additional development on the empty lot adjacent to the two existing towers once market conditions had improved. I was also informed that the view from my unit was likely to be altered by the new development. No one at I D B or their associates ever attempted to mislead me. On the contrary, the developer has been very upfront with the residents of O Q P, that's one Queensridge Place, including holding several meetings to discuss the plans for new construction." Another email that was received from Robert Brenton says, "The developer's plans to build, he's aware of and support the developer's plans to build Phase Two as a single tower. I think this building is good zoning and will add value to our area. Most importantly, we were made aware by the developers before we bought our unit that future towers or tower would be built on the vacant property and would block a portion of our view to the west. The developer has bent over backwards to work with the community and to amend his plans in an effort to appease some local area residents, apparently to no avail for the vocal minority." And finally, we have a letter from Mr. Mason, who is here, so you could really hear from human person, but it's a great letter, so I'd like to just read a little of it. It's again to Councilman Beers. "As a resident and former president of the Homeowners Association for One Queensridge Place, I hereby give my strong support to the project currently being proposed for a single tower to replace the two towers previously entitled. I have been following the process very closely from the beginning, and the developer has acted with the utmost honesty and integrity from the start. Ultimately, as human beings, we do not accept change easily. As such, there has been much consternation, a great deal of misinformation put forth by residents who either don't understand the project, don't like it, or would prefer to see the land vacant in perpetuity. Taken purely as a land use proposal, the proposed project is far superior to the previously approved project." I would like if we might be able to just submit those. I have originals for the record on that. There's also a letter that we have from E H B Companies, again from Vicki DeHart. It's to Councilman Beers. "As you know, my partner Johann Lowy and I were part of the original development team of the One's Queensridge Place project. I am also a resident of the towers. Johann and I have reviewed the proposed changes to Phase Two of the project, and we support Queensridge Towers LLC and its proposed modifications." So we actually have people who are very much in support of what we're doing. Now, the reason for that, as you see, there is the exhibit that shows, is that exhibit six? Yeah. It shows why there is no change. Now, I think it's very important to read just a portion from staff, and I'll be very brief. Although the same number, this is from the staff report. "Although the same number of residential units is proposed, by removing the approved fourteen-story Westernmost Tower and replacing it and the approved sixteen-story tower with a taller twenty-two-story tower further east of the original locations, the project becomes less intense than previously approved. The residential adjacency variance decreased from fifty-eight percent of the three-to-one slope requirement to twenty-eight percent. The proposed building would be angled in such a way that the western edge would be almost six hundred feet away from the residential properties and is stepped along the west side to be forty feet lower than at the tallest point. And we appreciate staff's comments in that regard very much." Now, one final point before Mr. Borgel weighs in. We all know, and your city attorneys have made it crystal clear, that views are not a protectable zoning interest. If that were not the case, then you'd have one hotel and you couldn't build a hotel next to it. You wouldn't have a two-story community next to a single-story community. You wouldn't have... You wouldn't have a school or a shopping center or whatever next to any residential development. Views are not a protectable zoning interest. But as painful as that, that concept is to people, you have had people stand up here in front of you and tell you in the most heartfelt of ways that the home, their home is their most important and real, and many people, only real investment. And if you put this two-story thing behind them, you're going to block the view to the most important thing they have. And you have to tell those people, we're sorry, as long as it meets the code, and if he's not willing to voluntarily reduce the height, there's nothing legally we can do to stop him from building. And that same rule has to apply whether you live on the ground or whether you live in the air. So it is especially, and I need to get this on the record, true in this case, because those who bought in Queensridge Towers, there is a public offering statement for One Queens, Queensridge Place that they all received. On page two of that, it's entitled Development Rights. "No assurances are given that the size of any building or improvement will be consistent with existing buildings and improvements. No assurances are made regarding the location of any building or other improvement that may be constructed or made within any part of the condominium pursuant to the Development Rights." On page 13, well, wait a minute, on page 10, Views, it specifically is entitled Views. "Developer makes no representations as to the desirability or existence of any view from the unit. The currently existing view from the unit may be changed at any time, either due to action taken by developer, affiliates of the developer, or any third party." I mean, that could not be any, any more clear. And finally, Developers' Representations. "Purchasers may not rely upon any verbal representations, portrayals, or promises other than as expressly contained, including specifically, but without limitation, any representation as to see," this on page 13, "see the existence of any view from the units, or that any existing view will not be obstructed in the future." That's from the public offering statement. Similarly, there's a document that's a declaration, and in that declaration, this comment is contained. "Developers shall not be restricted in the location, design, or appearance of any improvements on the annexable land or the number of units that may be created on the annexable land, except as may be required by applicable zoning requirements." So, in legal documents, they're being told, we're not restricted, we're not honoring, you know, we're not required to respect any view, we're not required to tell you how high it's going to be or wide or whatever, but despite that, and much to credit seriously of the developer who's in the audience today, he didn't say, Chris, you're a lawyer, go, let's just build it where we want to build it, which candidly, we always thought was the better place to build it because you had the three that were aligned in the same way. He didn't say that. He spent a quarter of a million dollars redesigning this to put it in a place that he thought people would say, thank you very much for doing that. And instead, we, as you know, we got serious opposition initially, although judging from the crowd today, I, I think there's been kind of a realization that there might not be a lot that, that you are in a position to do, even if you wanted to do that. But I want to show you just some pictures quickly, if I can, to give you a comfort level, because I know it's important to all of you, it's especially important to Councilman Beers. This is his ward. He obviously cares about the people who live in the towers, who live adjacent to it in the two doors. This on the, and I think this is most telling. If this were built, this is from Tower One, right? This is from Tower One. This is where the towers would be located if there were two. This is what they would see from Tower One if we built the two towers, as originally. Now, the next is what they would see if we built it where we originally proposed to build it, okay? And now, the next is where it is now. Now, I'd like Mr. Borgel to go back to and put the one up where it shows where it could have been, right there. Now, there's not any real, there's a difference, but is there that much of a difference between what we could do and what we're proposing to do to suggest that the developer hasn't tried his best to make this work? And as I say, at considerable expense, he moved it there. Now, let's go to Tower Two just for a second. When you look at the original place, if you're in Tower Two, this is what you would see if we built what we could build right now under the approvals we have. That's what, you're looking at, that's what you would see. Now, I have to tell you, there's a lot of people that say, you know, there's still an awful lot of view that we have, but we, admittedly, the tower blocks it. Now, under our proposal, this is under the original proposal that wasn't accepted, that's what they would have seen. And they said, well, all right, well, let's go back then and we'll reposition it, and that's the next shot, right there. Now, I'd ask you to please compare those two. The red or pink is where it would have been built had we just built it according to the approvals we have. The application before you today, that's the view that's affected should, should we get your approval and, and build it in that location. There's just a couple other things we want to show you and we're done. There was some issue about other neighbors. What about the Tudor homes? Those are very nice little homes in that area. I really like, I say little, they're very nice homes. Anyway, we said, let's, let's take a look at their view, and we have some pictures to show you there. The first is a view from, I believe it's Alta, is that, where is that from?
Alton Clubhouse.
Alton Clubhouse. That's what, what they would have seen if we built the two towers, all right? That's what they'll see now. So from that location, it's clearly better for those residents who want some kind of view that, that we go to the one tower. Now, we picked another spot. Now, this one's actually a little startling. This is what they would see if you lived right adjacent to the, to where the Tudor's home and that second tower was built. That's what they would see. With the modifications we made, that's what they'll see. So there's no question, and I, I would, I don't believe anybody's here from the Tudor folks, but I, no one would suggest, I think, that this impacts them anyway more severely. In fact, it impacts them a whole lot better. Now, the one final point is, oh, this, oh, no, I'm sorry, I missed this. This is if you live, I'm a lowlander, I live in Queensridge, but I live on the ground, all right? So if you were at Queensridge, this is what you might see if the two towers were built. We wanted to cover everybody, that's what you would see now. So I, no, no one who would have a view of this from Queensridge would care if it were two towers or one, but obviously, the one tower is appreciably better for them. One of the concerns that was raised was quality of design and architecture. This is a picture of what is there now. These are absolutely gorgeous. And I think, Councilman, it's got to be one of the things of which you're most proud in your ward, because I think it's just an incredibly beautiful place to live. And all of, a good many of my richer friends happen to live in, in the towers. But this is what's approved, as you can see, this is the design what's being asked for your approval today. There's not any real difference in design, or there's one less tower, obviously, but the design the same, the quality's the same, it's going to be a quality project. So now, all of that being said, staff recommends approval, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval, and we would very respectfully ask for your approval of our application, subject to that approval unless extended by this council being void three years from the date of this final action, and here's why. Staff is recommending two, we are asking for three, and the reason we're asking for three is we've had to go back through the whole design process. So we would like some additional time to make that up. So we're respectfully asking, Councilman, if we could have three years before this zoning were void as opposed to two years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Borgel, I may have some additional comments?
Greg Borgel, 300 South Fourth Street. I appreciate certainly our attorney's thorough presentation that makes it unnecessary for me to say much, and I will say that this is really an easy call for planners. Let me just read a sentence from the staff report. "The changes proposed by this amendment would reduce the intensity of the development and its impacts to neighboring residential properties. Therefore, staff is recommending approval with conditions." Or to say it in even simpler terms, four towers is going to be less of an imposition, more of an imposition. Three towers will be less. We would hope you would approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Borgel. This is a public hearing, I'll declare it open. If you have comments on this, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record.
I'll try to be quicker.
Okay.
David Mason, 9103 West Alta. I was one of the first people to buy there. Actually, they hadn't even finished the lobby when I moved in. I love it there. Up until last month, I was the president of the HOA there. I was very much aware of what was going to be built next door. I think what's being built or proposed to be built is better. Candidly, I liked the first location of the building better. I thought it fit better for all of the homeowners except a few. And there's about 440 people in that tower, those two towers that we have. And the number of people who are objectionable is a very, very, very small percentage. They happen to be in a specific location. And I think, and I truly believe, that the reason you didn't hear from more people was because they all knew what was happening, they saw what was going on, and they weren't objectionable to it. So they just went on about their lives. The few that were, were, whether it was this tower or the two towers, would have been affected pretty much the same, and I think it's a mistake to not approve this. The, I think you'd see more people in favor of it if it wasn't August, and in Las Vegas, many people leave in August. But with that being said, I'd just like to say I'm in full support of it. It does affect my view. I wish it would be a park, with the mayor is out there as a statue or something, maybe, I don't know.
Oh, I haven't heard that.
But anyway, I have full support for it, and I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your years in service with your HOA. It's a headache. Next, please, state your name.
My name is Anthony Hardes. Planning and staff, they recommend approval for the towels. So if they recommend approval, the ball falls in y'all's hand, and I'm, most of the time, y'all generally agree with your staff and, and the planning, if both of them agree with each other, then y'all kind of fill in, fill in the gap. So what I'm trying to say, I'm in favor of it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this, please come forward and state your name. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for comment from Mr. Pack, would you please?
Madam Mayor, thank you. While it was stated that it was an easy decision for staff, I'm going to backpedal a little bit and say it wasn't such an easy decision for staff. In terms of analyzing what is currently approved versus what is being proposed, where the number of units does not change, obviously, the impact to our existing infrastructure will not change. What we had to analyze was one taller building versus two shorter towers and the impacts of that. And so we looked at things such as the residential adjacency variance. That had significantly decreased through this proposal, and so that was one of the factors that led to our decision for recommending approval of this. And then, secondly, looking at the distance of the towers themselves from the residential neighborhood to the west, that distance is significantly increasing. So those were two of the major factors that we looked at in recommending approval of this project, again, where the number of units is not changing and the impact to our infrastructure will not change. So those were two of the things that we analyzed and was the basis for our recommendation of approval of this proposal.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, if I may add, it's just Flynn makes everything look easy, I guess, is what we really meant to say.
Oh, see, that's much, much more wisely stated and true. Okay, Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think as we went through the folks who protested this and tried to categorize their specific protests, I think most of them have been addressed in the discussion that we've seen so far. A big one was the height variance issue, which, as Flynn just described, is actually, what's being requested here is less of a variance than what was previously permitted for this area. One concern that a number of residents brought up was that there was no traffic study included with this change. However, Flynn has educated me that the traffic studies come at a later stage when the construction permits are let. He's nodding his head in agreement. And so we will have a traffic study. I would also note that with the same number of units, under the old plan and the new plan, there may not be much of a difference in the traffic impact, but that will be tackled at a later date. There was some concern that the developer lacks the wherewithal to get this project done. The same developer is building Tivoli across the street, and for those of us who travel the neighborhood daily, Tivoli erected some, two buildings of about four or five stories of steel, and nothing's happened for quite a while, which has been a concern. However, it turns out that they've got a significant tenant that wanted some customizations for the third of the three buildings that are underway, and the developer had been stopped by accommodating that tenant, that major tenant, whose name I don't think I have the leisure to announce, but I've privately been told, and it's pretty exciting. And this week, in fact, our plans checking department has been put to work with the extra premium to do it quickly, to review the new plans so that they can resume the Tivoli project. So Tivoli is moving forward, and, and that was the primary evidence that we had an issue. And really, Flynn notes, we don't really have any legal justification to weigh that issue in the decision before us. So with that, Your Honor, I would move approval with all conditions, assuming that the applicant has accepted all those conditions.
We do, we did ask that there be three years instead of two before the zoning was voided because we've had to go back and redesign.
So with the exception of three years instead of two.
What was the recommendation from planning and our recommendation from staff on the three versus two?
The recommendation from staff and from the planning commission is our standard condition of two years. However, our code allows city council some leeway in terms of that if there are mitigating circumstances. The applicant has made the case that they would prefer three years, so city council can do that. I would note that that condition change would be on item number 58, the Site Development Plan Review Application, and that would be a change to condition number three.
So I would like you to do them one at a time, if you would, Councilman.
Okay, Your Honor, I would move approval with all conditions of the planning commission and staff recommendation to approve item number 56.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote on agenda item 56, and please post that. And that motion carries.
I would move that we approve, as the planning commission and staff recommend, with all conditions, item number 57.
There's a motion to approve on agenda item 57, would you please vote and please post?
Your Honor, without pretending to argue with staff, it's my impression that we might need three years on these variances as well, and so before the motion becomes final, stay, I'd be corrected by staff.
And the applicant is absolutely correct. We do need to amend condition number three on item number 57 as well. I'm sorry, I missed that.
And so I would like to withdraw that motion.
It's already been voted and-
It's already been voted and posted, but we can do a second motion.
Okay.
So I would like to move that we amend our immediately previous action approving item number 57 to grant fees, or grant three years instead of two.
Okay, there's an amendment to that motion that's before you. As a motion on 57, please vote on that and please post that amendment. And that motion carries, and now you'll make the same amendment on 58.
And, Your Honor, for number 58, I would move that we approve, as the planning commission and staff recommend, with all conditions except for condition number three, which instead of two years would read three years, item number 58.
There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Happy trails.
Your Honor, members of the council, Councilman Beers, thank you very much. I know this, this one was, was a tough one. I appreciate all your consideration. Thank you.
And I think we owe a thank you to all the neighbors who worked with us over the last six months to get this to the point, that none of them feel they had to be here to be against us. So, thank you.
It's wonderful. We're very excited. We look forward to this and the finishing of Tivoli Village, too.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Good luck. It's wonderful. Okay, I think we are on agenda item 60. And so agenda item 60, ROC 54762, public hearing. Applicant, Easy Pawn, owner Cheyenne Jones LLC. For possible action or request for review of condition to amend condition D of special use permit SUP 18266 to allow firearms to be taken in as pawn, but no firearms may be sold retail on site. At 6032 West Cheyenne Avenue, this is in Ward Five with Councilman Barlow. Staff recommends denial. And it is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative's, representative present? Would you please announce yourself?
Thank you. Marin Perry Ballard Spar, 100 City Parkway, Suite 1750. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This store was originally approved in 2007, and we are seeking an amendment to condition D that currently reads that no firearms will be taken in pawn or sold on the site. And we're here with this request because we would like to see, this is our only store that isn't permitted to take guns in pawn, and we're seeking some uniformity among stores and also uniformity with competitors. The one thing that we want to make very clear for the record is that we're only requesting the ability to take guns in pawn. There is no request to sell firearms on this site. I think that sometimes people worry about that, and actually, I would like to submit that taking, being able to take them at this store is probably preferable, because when all the other stores do it, people will show up with their firearms, and if we have to turn them away, they might not be very happy about it. Also, when they bring in their firearm, it's entered into the metro system, catalogued, if there's any problem with the firearm. Metro has the opportunity to confiscate it. Further, if they pay off their loan, they have to go through the same background check that they would to purchase a firearm if they want to get it back. And then if they forfeit it, the company has a, an FFL that the, the fire would be transferred out of state. They are not sold at any stores, at, at any Easy Pawn stores in Southern Nevada. So we, we believe that this actually works pretty well for uniformity and will provide less of an issue if someone thinking that they can pawn their firearm shows up at the store and then is turned away. We've spoken with Councilman Barlow. He's expressed to us that he wants to make sure that there are some, there's some additional language in the condition to help reflect what was anticipated in the original approval. We're, we're happy to do that. No firearms sold on the site, no advertising that firearms would be taken at the site, and no display whatsoever. When they come into the system, they'll go, just like they would normally go through the metro system and be run and stored in the same way with no display. And if you have any questions, I have Kenny Alwine here with me, who's, who's our local boss, who can answer any questions. But with that, we would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn to Mr. Fag at this point on your denial.
Madam Mayor, staff had recommended denial on this item because when the item was originally approved by city council, the condition was placed by city council, and so consequently, we would defer to city council in any recommendations relative to this condition.
Thank you very much. It is a public hearing. Let's do that first, and please come forward, state your name on this particular agenda item 60.
My name's, my name's Anthony Hardis. Firearms, you know, that's a pretty touchy subject, and it is a pawn shop that's dealing with it. And the lady said this particular pawn shop has a, don't have the same rules of being able to, what, sell the pawn, sell the gun?
They have no request to sell them at all. If someone wants to come in and bring a firearm and take a loan out against it, that would be prohibited here, and that's what we're requesting.
Okay, but the other pawn places, y'all business, y'all have, they can.
May I point out to Mr. Anthony that the dialogue must be between him and you, not the applicant?
Yes, please. I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On a sidebar here myself.
My apologies. Okay, well, it's up to the city council about, it, it does recommend denial, so it must be something concerning, denying to have a reason for putting denial on there, and I want to know what that is. You bring that up in your discussion, so I'll just listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on this agenda item? Okay, I will close the public hearing, and I'm going to turn this over to-
I'm sorry, I wasn't done. Sorry. How are you today?
Hello?
Oh, hi. I just, I was wondering, I wanted to hear more about that.
You have to be on a microphone that's working, and please state your name and be sure you stay on the item.
Good morning. Catherine Birbano. I just wanted to, I wanted to know more about that subject matter, about the firearms. Has it been an issue here in Las Vegas? Has it been a common complaint, or?
No, I mean, I think what, what you have heard is this is more about that the pawn star, shops have been able to, or will be able to operate on a same base level. That's what we're here.
I was just curious to know more about information on the education and the whole voting thing.
And David Riegelman from our public information office would be happy to supply that for you.
I'm sorry?
David Riegelman of our public information office can supply you with that information.
Is he in the office upstairs or down?
No, he was here all morning, but I think he is not in, he is up in his office. So if you just call into City Hall and ask for Mr. Riegelman in public information, be happy to give you that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Carolyn, would, I'm sorry, Ms. Goodman, would you mind informing me who Flag Finn is? Ms. Flag Finn?
The gentleman right here, who's our director of planning.
Director of planning, and he sets the agendas?
He's pardon?
Um, he's, he's the one who organizes the agendas?
No, the agenda's organized through the clerk's office.
I'm sorry?
Our city clerk's office.
City clerk's office. There's so many extras, and I just didn't understand how, how things, how things are properly organized. Because I just, I noticed the names, and I just wanted to meet them.
Okay.
I am representing the younger adult group. I try my best to keep up with this so that I can inform, you know, my fellow peers.
Well, I'm sure Mrs. Bridges, who's right here, our city clerk, would be happy with her staff to give you information on the agendas.
Okay.
Thank you.
What is this, why is it that there are people who are coming up here to get contracts approved for new, building new projects?
No, I think that's something, you talk with Mr. Riegelman. We have a motion right now on the floor, so let's address that. Thank you for coming forward.
Okay. The motion was in regards to firearm, and that was the subject matter I was interested in-
And this is Mr.-
-because I do have friends that hunt, and-
Councilman Barlow. And so that's the issue. So I've already closed the public hearing, giving you licensed staff a few little minutes up there, but the public hearing's closed.
Elections, I'm sorry, elections was another subject matter also.
Yes.
I want you to vote, so when is it that, the next voting, the next, when would it be?
Our city clerk will advise you. Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
It's okay. Be, I'll defer my time over to Councilman Ross, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Mayor, with your permission, I just wanted to, Councilman, I remember this item clearly in 2007 as I represented this area and when, when they were licensed for the first time, and my concern about the, the gun sales. I remember that condition very clearly, Mr. Fag, that we placed on the application at that time. But I think with technology today and people bringing their firearms in, it really gives Metro that upper hand, and you probably already know that, I'm preaching to the choir, but I'm in full support of what you guys are doing, and I think the sale would be a different topic, we'd be having a different discussion. I know this is near Councilman's house anyway, so, but I just wanted to say that and let you know that I remember this clearly. They've been a fabulous operator in the time that I represented that area, Councilman. They still continue to be a pretty good, great community partner, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, Councilman. And there are no-
And I appreciate that.
Public hearing's closed.
And I appreciate that, and I, I have had, I think approximately three or four residents that have called in who are in opposition, and I had a conversation with them, whether, whether via email and/or telephone call, explaining to them the details of how this would take place. And there was a specific gentleman who stated that he didn't want even the ability for Easy Pawn to be able to take the guns in. But philosophically, we disagreed, but I, I shared with him that I would not be making a decision if I believed that it were wrong to do so. And so with that, I believe that it is okay to receive the weapons, specifically with the, as Councilman Ross mentioned, the technology that is in place and the security measures that Easy Pawn has basically have in place in regards to how that weapon is basically returned to the customer through that, if you will, that application or permit process once again, to make sure that our community remains safe as possible. And so the major concern for me, not just because it's across the street from my house, it's also, in addition to the public safety as a whole in relation to guns being sold. I believe that there are specific places and locations that guns should be sold in, inside of neighborhoods. That's just one area philosophically, I believe, does not warrant guns to be sold. So I really appreciate Easy Pawn not only taking in those weapons, because they could be taken in weapons that could be used to do harm in a negative way versus a positive way, right? From a protection standpoint. And so for that, with those additional added conditions, as far as no advertising inside of the store, that you take in weapons, and also advertising as it relates to, anything as it relates to weapons overall, at, at that specific location. And if you are amenable to those conditions, then I'm amenable to make a motion.
If I may through you, Mayor, I did submit, we discussed some specific language that we are, you know, in agreement with. If we want to have either me or Director Fag-
Flynn.
-or you read into the record, I'm happy to.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, through you, the language that we would propose as an amended condition would be as follows. Condition D of special use permit SUP 18266 shall be amended as follows. The taking of firearms as collateral for pawn is permitted, but firearms shall not be displayed or sold at the store, and exterior signage advertising the taking of firearms in pawn is prohibited. So that would be the condition that we would propose.
That is correct.
Agreed, too?
We're in agreement with that.
Thank you.
And if you agree to that, then I would like to move for approval to remove the condition, but add the additional conditions as First Amendment if necessary, and we'll go from there. So my motion would be to delete the condition, but move for approval of the new conditions at this location.
With the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion. Would you please vote? And then please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman Barlow and Councilman Ross.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you. Agenda item 61, ROC 54821. It's public hearing. American Outdoor Advertising LLC, owner JTL Holdings LLC, for possible action on a request for review of condition of an approved special use permit SUP 16947 to delete condition number one, which states, quote, "The billboard face shall consist of static vinyl panels or a similar material as approved by the planning and development department," and to delete condition number two, which states, quote, "Animated and electronic message unit signage and digital signage is prohibited," end quote, at 4600 Meadows Lane. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward One, and in her absence, Councilman Barlow has been given that authority to speak on this and recommend. Staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
I am. I'm Bill Curran with the Ballard Spar Firm, 100 North City Parkway, and until Mr. Kemfer described my neighborhood, I'm a fellow lowlander with my neighbor, Mr. Kemfer. Anyhow, I represent American Outdoor. The applicant on this, they've had the sign since, I believe, it's 2006. At that time, digital billboards were just being introduced into the community, and there was uncertainty about what their impact would be along freeways. So Councilwoman Tarkanian requested that we not have a digital billboard. Since that time, as you know, they've become much more widespread. In fact, right along the Meadows Mall there, there is four boards. Two of them are already digital. There's two more up at Jones that are digital. If this had, if this board had been in existence previously, we would have been able to convert it simply through an administrative process. But because this had the specific condition that it not be digital, it requires us to come back to you. And again, as Mr. Flynn explained, staff has recommended denial because they are upholding the specific condition that was imposed, and I think it was 2006. Anyhow, there were three protests received. The councilwoman informed me of those. One of them, I tried to contact, but his home was 13 miles away from this, so I didn't reach out to him. Second one is quite a distance away. Because the Meadows Mall is such a large property, he would be, if you look at the circles that are on your screen right now, he'd be across from the second most easterly circle, but he has a very large sound wall across his back property line, right there on the freeway. He couldn't see the sign, even if it was directly across the street. But my sign is the one at the bottom down on the left, a long ways away. Third protester I talked to last night, he lives on the south side of Alta. I don't know how he even got noticed, because I don't think it's in the notice area, but nonetheless, he told me that now that he understands what it is, he's fine and wishes to withdraw his protest, so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fag, if you would, comment on the denial, please.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Just as with the last application that we heard, again, this was, condition was a place by city council, and so we defer to council in terms of removing the condition.
Thank you very much. And it is a public hearing which I declare open. Anyone wishing to be heard on this agenda item, please come forward and state your name.
Question, Mayor.
And just, let me close the public hearing, if I may, because there's no one here who wishes to speak on this item. Are you interested in this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to ask staff on this, it's just, it's a bookmark. I have no objection to this, but I want to make sure where we stand on these things. My, my district, Councilwoman Tarkanian, so we, on the, on the east-west boundaries, we share each other's Interstate 15 area. And I wanted to just see where we stood on animation on these electronic signs. You know, I just, sometimes I don't think it's a coincidence that there is an animated billboard on the northbound side of I-15, just south of Charles, actually, it's, it may be in the county, south of Sahara, I can't remember. That bothers me because I sometimes think that it's causing accidents. This, this little darling's, is that in the city or the county? In any event, it's close. And every now and then, a provocative image will fly by, and you just kind of wonder how often, you know, the thousands of cars that go by every day, how often somebody is just distracted by that enough to have an accident. So what do we do about control on all of that? Does the county control animation on their electronic boards?
Madam Mayor, to respond to the question, no, Councilman, I don't believe that they do. We currently have in our code, relative to electronic signs in our supergraphic sign code, limitations on brightness and the changing of images, how frequently the images can change. We don't have that language in our code relative to other types of electronic signs. For example, our off-premise signs or billboards. One of the things on our work plan this year is to do that, because we are seeing these more frequently. We do have concerns about impact to residential properties in terms of the brightness of signs, also distraction of drivers and glare for drivers, so we will be pursuing that over the next year.
So, not to be a nitpicker, but apparently nits is the, is the measurement now, not just foot candles or lumens or whatever you use?
There are a couple of different measurement standards. Nits is one of them that we have used in our supergraphic sign code.
So I, see, we already prohibit flashing signs on a street. We already prohibit flashing, I know there's a few out there, because people want to draw attention to their little business, but it, very distracting, yet- but it's very distracting. These are more distracting, and people are going 70 versus 25 or 30 or 35. And I just think we need to get a handle on that pretty quick. It's, you know, who knows if it's caused some accidents? I think it may have. And I don't want to try to attribute liability to Little Darling's. God knows they have enough troubles. But it seems like there's somebody out there that is getting a little more attention than they should get. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for Councilwoman Tarkanian, if you would, Councilman?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. On behalf of Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian, I would like to move for approval of this item, subject to all conditions. That will be my motion at this time.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve. Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Curran.
Thank you.
Thanks. Agenda item 62 DIR 54776, public hearing. Applicant Olympia Homes, owner Section 12 LLC at Al. For possible action, a request for required review of development report is required by subsection 9.01. The development agreement between the City of Las Vegas and KEG Property Group LLC dated June 26 of 2011 on approximately 1,662 acres in the southwest corner of Fort Apache and Moccasin Road. This is in Ward Six with Councilman Ross. Staff recommends approval. It is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the applicant present? Or hello, applicant for the city? Yes, sir.
In this case, Madam Mayor, staff is the applicant. We are required to report on the development agreements that the city has entered into with private developers, in this case, every two years for the Kyle Canyon Development Agreement. What we are to do is to report on whether or not the developer is fulfilling the terms of the agreement. And in this case, we can report that, yes, they are. But let me go through some of the specifics in terms of what has been accomplished on the development agreement to date. First of all, they have actually proceeded forward with this development agreement and have filed a parent tentative map, which was approved in April. Their parent final map is in the review process currently, and we are just awaiting final MYLAR approval on that. There have been a total of four tentative maps submitted under that parent tentative map for a total of 751 building lots there on the property. It is the intent of the developer to start construction on those as soon as November of 2014. So we're very happy to see that progress is being made there at Kyle Canyon. In terms of any thresholds, the developer would be required to begin construction on infrastructure or parks or public uses. They have not met those thresholds yet. We'll continue to monitor that to make sure that as those thresholds are met, they do fulfill their obligations there. Again, as I had mentioned beforehand, we find that the developer is in substantial compliance with the terms of the development agreement, and we recommend approval of this report.
Great, great, very exciting. It is public hearing time. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward and state your name. Your microphone is not on. Now it is.
My name is Anthony Hardison. I approve, the approval of staff and Mr. What's his name, what is it? This is a good one. You know, if they're going to build all this, hey, looking good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn this over to Ward Six, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys put that map back up on the screen for me, real quick? Just so I can kind of give council members an idea of what we're looking at here. This is US 95, and essentially the horse drive interchange, where it bisects the two divisions of colors here. This will be that master plan community that used to be Kyle Canyon Gateway. And now the Olympia Group is now in play with it and moving forward, as Mr. Fag has indicated. So this is exciting, because those lots are soon going to be homes. There's a lot of movement going on out there. As you can see, Kyle Canyon Road there to the upper side of that area, there's Kyle Canyon Road, right there at the Mouse, going up to Mount Charleston. But this is a significant sign of the times. The economy's changed, we're heading in the right direction. We, as a local government, are doing, I believe, our part in helping the economy push forward. I know Ms. Fretwell and her team has been, you know, very good at pointing us and keeping us focused on the right direction, not only for the benefit of our own budget in the city, but for the benefit of the private sector as well and job creation. So council members, as you look at those colors, I want you to think of jobs. And I always say this, especially in the Northwest, if you see an orange cone, there's a job behind that orange cone. With that, Mayor, I would like to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
All right, let's go and build. Does the motion please vote? And please post. And we are coming back. Motion carries. That's just great news. Aren't you lucky out there? Going well. Agenda item 64, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject dwells the amount of time. Any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward from the public? Please state your name. Thank you.
Come down here when I can to kind of harass you a bit, kind of get you through the day. But anyway, I know that the city is moving forward now, you know, a lot of things are picking up and everything going in a better direction. And I know next year, the legislatures are going to meet, and you're going to have some situation going up there. But the main thing is, Mayor, I know you're concerned about your policemen, your officers, how you have to deal with the county commission, you know, for them to do whatever. But I'm hoping that the legislature will fix it, where the city of Las Vegas can cut loose from the county being able, although the county's in charge of all police departments through the whole area, you know, not just your city. But you know, they had to ask for it. And I think that's wrong for the state to give them that privilege to do that, because each city is an entity of its own, it's a government. And so sometimes I think the state may have, may make some real adjustments on that and kind of set the county off to the side and let you do your own thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please state your name.
Salutations, Council. My name is Lisa Andrews, and I'm here on behalf of myself and my nine-year-old son, which both of us are confidential address program members through the state of Nevada. I have a very fragile situation as to why I'm here today, and my emotions and my physical abilities have just been ripped and torn. I live on a property, Fort Apache and Gowan are the cross streets, and it's on a subsidized housing program. And the code enforcement officer has been out to the house with some problems with the ventilation, and there was really nothing that, all of the sources that I have sought, that no one, that there's no one that can do anything. Nothing can be done. I have a direct neighbor that smokes some type of chemical drug every day, and this has been going on for two years. And my son and I are exhausted, it's making our life miserable, and nobody can do anything about it. I have tried sources with Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority to try to get them to move us out of the house, and they're doing nothing, because their funding is cut, and they're blaming everybody else for the problem. All of my personal efforts for prosperity has been shattered.
I'm going to interrupt you, Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
We want to get you some help.
Yes.
So I am going to ask our city manager to be in touch with the Dr. Hibler of our Neighborhood Services.
Yes.
And Ms. Fretwell here will instruct you as to how to proceed with that. We want to get you some help, so.
Thank you.
If you will, just step right to the corner there, and she will either give you the contact, or we'll have somebody contact you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And before I sneeze, I'm going to go backwards to Agenda Item 63, which I keep missing. I'd instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk. Wonderful. Now we'll move on to Agenda, I have one here, it just stuck to me, so she can have that back. Thank you very much. We will now move on to Agenda Item 65. And I think we are going to start with Councilman Coffin this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Be happy. I don't have any announcements to make of a specific nature about Ward Three right now, except we're suffering through the last few weeks of weather, and we haven't had quite the flooding until just two days ago that Councilman Ross has had. But I do want to say that we're sticking together in the older part of town, doing our best. We're having a greater and greater problem with homeless people and vagrants and bums occupying houses and recklessly, you know, shall we say, behaving incorrectly in those places, and it's hurting our property values. I don't know, probably we don't have enough staff to go out and roust these people, but we just lost another beautiful home on my street, two doors down, nicest home on our street, that had been occupied for many years by a prominent family and was unoccupied only a few months. And up in smoke it went. Our fire department truly came fast and often for this group, because we really saved the neighborhood. And why don't I say "we"? I don't mean me, I mean RFD did. They were promptly there, they protected all the structures around. There was a lot of dry vegetation and a lot of palm trees with excess stuff hanging, and you know they go up like Roman candles. So it was a delicate situation for quite a while. But I did want to take this time to thank the chief and all the battalion chiefs. There were more than one there. It was a two-alarm fire.
We saw it from City Hall. You could see the smoke from behind the rise.
You saw the real deal there, and it could have been a real disaster in the historic part of town. And the house, built in 1931, was truly, you know, one of a kind, as all those are in that old Park Place subdivision, all custom-built, just behind Las Vegas Boulevard in Charleston. Built in 1931, real laugh and plaster, you know, you just don't see that often. When the firefighters were in there trying to get into the fire, it was unbelievable as some of the interior walls were burning. I don't like the looks of it. I think it's, I think it's almost of suspicious circumstances, because it almost appeared that that fire happened in more than one place. So I know that our investigators are looking at it. We're going to have to knock the house down pretty quick, because it's definitely dangerous. And yet, it's still one of those things that reminds you why we have firefighters. It isn't just to transport victims to hospitals. It is to attempt to protect us from the misbehavior of others. This probably wasn't smoking, you know, it probably was something bigger cooking, probably. There was no gas there, there was no electricity, nothing, no water on that property. So it didn't just miraculously happen. But the people who started it were long gone by the time the first fire engine arrived. So I really want to publicly thank our troops in the firefighting field for being there, and the ambulance people, the people. This is another thing about our medics. They're called to a heck of a lot of fires, and they're all firefighters, they know how to fight fires, but they're there to support the troops too. So they may be pulling hoses, they may be working right there beside the guys that are carrying the hoses, because that's their duty, but they're also ready to be called away for a medical emergency. We even had backup come in from the county. This was so, so dangerous for the first 20 minutes or so. And I think our system worked well, and God bless them, I got a chance to see them in action, and unfortunately, on my own street. But that's what I have to say today. Thank you firefighters, thank you from the top down. Undoubtedly, a very well-managed situation. And that is what I have to say today, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. In Ward Five, under our announcements, on August 7, coffee with the councilman will be taking place, which is tomorrow. So please join me for coffee at the Starbucks located at 751 Rancho and Bonanza. So come on out. We have a host of individuals, Mayor, over the last several months that have been coming in and really sharing some great ideas and getting great input as well. So this serves as not only a resource for the community, but an opportunity to have open government inside the neighborhood. And so I'm really thankful to Starbucks for allowing me to host coffee with the councilman the first Thursday of every month from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. In addition to that, on Saturday, August 16, the annual Ward Five Back to School Fair will be taking place, and I'm inviting all grades K through five and their families to join me for the Back to School Fair, happening on Saturday, August 16, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. We have backpacks full of school supplies, music, face painting games, vendors, and food trucks. And this is just one example, Mayor and Council, of some of the beautiful backpacks that will be given out to the kids, full of school supplies, from pencils, papers, calculators, notepads.
Wonderful.
Glue sticks, everything that a kid will need to return to the classroom. There's over $200 worth of value inside of this bag, and we'll be giving them out while supplies last. And we really want to make sure that our young people have an opportunity to return to the classroom, fully equipped with all the utensils necessary in order to be productive students in the classroom. And so that's one way that the City of Las Vegas and myself through Ward Five contributes to the academic success of our young people here in the City of Las Vegas. The Back to School Fair will be taking place at Lorenzi, at Lorenzi Park, located at 333 West Washington. So the cross street is Washington and Rancho. So please come on out. Once again, this is August 16, starting at 8:00 a.m. Doors open until 12:00 noon. I also want to thank the close to 100 vendors that will be teaming up with me to provide wraparound services for families throughout the City of Las Vegas to support the children and their families throughout the school year. In addition to that, on August 26, something I'm very excited about, specifically from an economic development standpoint, and jobs, 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 as my dear friend, Councilman Ross, continues to beat the drum, which is very important. We are opening the doors of the new El Pollo Loco, located at the corner of Lake Mead and Rancho. We will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, so I'm inviting the entire community to please come out and join me and the council as we cut the ribbon to the new El Pollo Loco inside the Enterprise Park. So residents and businesses are welcome to join me for this new addition to Ward Five, and it will take place August 26 at 11:00 a.m. The address is 1985 North Martin Luther King Drive, and the cross street, once again, is Martin Luther King and Lake Mead. I'm excited to add this wonderful, healthy food option to the West Las Vegas community. Next Sunday, September 7, the Bluegrass in the Park, the next Bluegrass in the Park concert will take place July 6 from 7:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. Mayor, I am glad to announce that over, close to 300 people participated last month for the Bluegrass in the Park. So it most definitely is growing in numbers. So we are really excited to, to take the newly renovated Lorenzi Park and turn it back into a family-oriented, active park. And so it's, it's a really great opportunity for families to come out and do something where the entire family can actually enjoy and participate, and a lot of picnic baskets, and everyone really enjoying the bluegrass bands that are, that are participating each first Sunday of every, of every month. They come out and they play, of course, banjos, fiddles, guitars, and mandolins, and you should see the number of children and families up dancing and enjoying themselves between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. inside of the newly renovated Lorenzi Park. So that's something that we will continue throughout the summer months, and something that I'm very pleased to have brought into Lorenzi Park. And in addition, of course, the Ward Five social media, you can always stay informed with your councilman, myself, and the Ward Five staff by following me on Twitter, Facebook, as well as my e-newsletter. And if you would like to receive the Ward Five e-newsletter, please visit my website at www.lasvegasnevada.gov/wardfive, or just send me an email, and I'll be happy to add you to the Ward Five e-newsletter. Now, as I transition also, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Please go.
On behalf of Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian, she is hosting a safety fair and end-of-summer pool party. And this will be taking place on Thursday, August 7, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Ward One, at the YMCA across from the Meadows Mall, in its 4141 Meadows Lane, 89107. There will be sounds from DJ Brando, community vendors, and refreshments while supplies last. Swimwear is required, so please, community and families, go out and please Swimwear is required, so please, community and families, go out and please join Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian at the Safety Fair and End-of-Summer Pool Party, taking place Thursday, August 7th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Mayor, that concludes the activities that are taking place in Ward 5 as well as Ward 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilman Ross, what are we doing out in your neck of the woods?
It's not raining, Mayor.
Oh, God.
And that's probably the most important thing today. The sun is shining, and I first want to express my appreciation to Jerry Walker and his crews for being ready when the rains came. And I've got to tell you what a complete team he's got, geared up and ready to go long before the first drop of rain hit Kyle Canyon in Mount Charleston, and that's where that water flow came from, the majority of it, certainly down Grand Teton. So, I want to express my appreciation to him first. Secondly, I want to express my appreciation to David Riggleman. We already did it today and his team, not only for our local city media guys getting the messages out there to the constituents in Centennial Hills, but also the social media that we use that was very, very effective. And I want to express my appreciation to our local media people. Every news outlet picked up on what was going on, and it was good to get people informed as to what roads were closed, what roads were open, what we were doing about it. And most of all, the patience of my constituents and my neighbors who live out there, because I was impacted also by this. And once again, I was out there, yes, when, I wasn't in my boots, I had my flip-flops on, but I knew I was going to get muddy and wet. That being said, Mayor, I now need to get into costume.
Oh, my gosh. Look at this.
It stays on my head. It is time, as Councilman Barlow alluded, for back to school. So, the fun stuff first, my Back to School Fair and movie in the park. We are watching Despicable Me, thus the headgear. And it's Friday, August 8th, 6:30 to 9:30. Our great community partner, CenturyLink, has partnered with us, and I will be in costume for the movie as well. So, council members, I highly encourage you to come on out and participate.
It will look good with your skirt.
If I can keep it on my head.
It will look good with your skirt.
It'll look good with my kilt, I see. Okay. Now, that being said, and that, that fun event over with, I will also be on August 12th, which is Tuesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, I will be at the grand opening of the Quest Academy on their Azure campus, which is an exciting time as well. So, things continue to sparkle and crack out in Centennial Hills and Ward 6, and we're very pleased with that. And Mayor, we have rescheduled our coffee with the mayor.
Yes, I'm waiting for Waffles.
We're going to Waffles, up on, up on Durango and Centennial Parkway.
Could you make sure they have chocolate ice cream to go on the Waffles?
I, I'm wondering if they're listening now and will, will see this. That's a great young.
So, come have chocolate ice cream and waffles with us.
And chocolate ice cream and waffles.
Ooh, is that good?
I'm sure staff will make that, make that happen. But that is, that's going to be August 21st at the Waffles Cafe, 6446 North Durango, essentially on the corner of Durango and Centennial Hills. So, Mayor, I look forward to seeing you out there, as my constituents do as well. So, it's going to be a fun morning.
Thank you. I am really drooling right now.
And that starts, that's going to be at 8:00 o'clock. All right, I said that. Now, in our continued partnership with Nevada Child Seekers, we do have a missing young lady, Lisa Nicole Smith. She's 17 years old, five foot eight, 150 pounds. She's got blue eyes, bleached blonde hair. She was last seen June 10th, and she's got tattoos on her arm. She was last seen in the area of North Nellis Boulevard and East Lake Mead. It is not known what she was wearing, but again, she does have those tattoos. She's also wearing hair extensions, which are, you can take those on and off. She's been known to dye her hair different colors, so it could be pink, black, or gray tint, and she may have a backpack with her personal belongings. If anybody has seen this young lady, we would like her to get her back to where she belongs. Contact the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, 702-828-3111, or of course, Nevada Child Seekers, 702-458-7009. And Mayor, it's interesting, not only does Nevada Child Seekers reach out to find those missing kids, but they're very, very active in our community. Even if you know of a child or a student, especially as school's getting ready to start and maybe having some, some issues at home or feeling misplaced or what have you, you can always reach out to Nevada Child Seekers, again, at 702-458-7009, for counseling or for some personal one-on-one contact to see what they can do to help.
That's helpful.
Great program, great people. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Ross, for doing this. It's so important. And an open door and somebody listens is always important. So, remember that number, everybody that's out there. Councilman Beers?
Steve, can I borrow your headgear?
Yep. Yep.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going on Ralston.
Going on Ralston.
Are you?
Classic. That's classic.
We are going to have Coffee with the Councilman this coming Friday morning, 7:30 to 9:00 o'clock. We'll be at Avery's Coffee, which is inside the Village Square Shopping Center. Please come out and join us, have a cup of joe, and tell us what you're thinking about City of Las Vegas business. And then, here in about three weeks, we'll be do, doing Beers with Beers at Ember's, Ember's Grill and Spirits, which is in Boca Park, 740 South Rampart Boulevard, number 7. That'll be from 5:30 till 7:30. The, the big Rampart sewer construction project began Monday of this week. So, it works like this. They're starting up by Vegas and Rampart, and they're going to be closing down four to five blocks at a time and narrowing things to two lanes 24 hours a day. It's going to be kind of messy. You want to try to use different streets to navigate the area up there. Buffalo, perhaps on Assisi, parts of it, maybe Durango will work. It's going to be ugly. So, probably 10 to 11 months, there's going to be four separate phases. If you're on our electronic email newsletter, then you'll get regular updates. If you'd like regular updates, then give us a telephone call or an email, ward2staff@lasvegasnevada.gov, and we'll add you to that list so that you can have those regular updates, because it's going to change every three or four weeks which exact specific areas of Rampart is impacted. Coming up, Christmas time.
Did I ask you, have you been advised? Is that a 20 you said, every day of the week? But are they working through the night on that?
They're not, because they're adjacent to residential neighborhoods, and they're pretty noisy. So, they're only going to be working while most people are awake, but the lane restrictions are going to be in place 24 hours a day. It's actually, you know, we had our sustainability presentation today from Mr. Perrigo, and this is somewhat related to that. This is going to essentially take everybody's shower and bathtub runoff from west of Rampart and run it to the, the little water reclamation facility that's at Durango and Cheyenne. And that'll be used to feed golf courses and free up drinking water and potable water for valley residents to use for better purposes. So, it's kind of a neat project, and it's, like I said, going to take almost a year to get there. And do, by all means, tune in with us, and we'll get you the regular email updates on, on which stretches are going to be impacted. The Jingle Bell Run Walk for the Arthritis Foundation is coming up at Christmas, and the deadline for sponsorship opportunities, if you'd like to get your business in the program or help this great cause out in some way. It's going to be at Tivoli on December 13th, if you want to get ahold of the Arthritis Foundation to become a sponsor. Their phone number is 367-1626. Or, as usual, give us a shout here at the Ward 2 office. Finally, on this day in music history, Pink Floyd's film The Wall had its U.S. premiere in New York City. Many people consider this perhaps the greatest concept album of rock and roll history. That's all we've got.
Thank you very much, Councilman. And for our perspective, you've already heard about Coffee with the Mayor and Councilman on August 21st, Thursday. Our next city council meeting will be Wednesday, August 20th, here in Chambers, 9:00 a.m. And so, at this point, with nothing else going on, thank you loyal staff for hanging in with us through the day. And it's 2:00 on the button. We thank you for your service.